We'll call the meeting to order. The meeting of the, uh, regular meeting of the city council is now called to order. Welcome, everybody. Nice to see all you smiling faces back, and a lot of new ones, too. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston?
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Blatz?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
I wasn't sure if Ryan was here, but he's here.
Councilmember Wyrick?
I'm here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Uh, Bill, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? All rise, please.
Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes in the agenda? Hearing none. The agenda is approved as submitted. Uh, we have no presentations, so we will go to consent calendar.
Moved to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
And I'll second that with the understanding there's a slight typo amendment.
Right, there were a couple, the clerk has made note of them.
All right.
What was typo, please?
We had the city manager listed in one set of minutes as still the interim manager, which is now no longer the case, and they had not listed my nominations for the Arts Commission properly, which they are accurately, so that's me. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Moved and seconded. Is there no objection? We will approve the consent calendar and move on to public hearing. Item number two, proposed minor revision to the municipal code regarding historic preservation. Will the city manager give us the background?
Yes, thank you. So essentially, I'll try to boil this down because it's a complicated, uh, subject, but last month, a property owner in the Terramina Historic District, uh, came into City Hall to obtain a minor work permit for a change in materials, uh, changing their, replacing their existing asphalt driveway with a concrete paver system. They came into City Hall and found that under the recently adopted ordinance that they would be required to obtain a work permit, uh, they're, they raised the concern, which we researched and, uh, and agree appears to be the case, which is that the Terramina ordinance initially adopted back in 2016 included exemptions that were superseded by this updated ordinance. The main exemptions are that, um, interior improvements, landscaping work, paved surfaces, and exterior improvements not visible from the street were intended to be exempt from the work permit process under the Terramina Historic Ordinance. Uh, I reviewed both ordinances. I believe that it was just an oversight when the revised ordinance was adopted, so I placed this on the agenda to try to correct that issue, uh, to ensure council agrees. Uh, we also, um, recommended waiving fees for those people that, uh, in order to get their project started, applied for the work permit, but if council agrees, they should not have had to apply for a work permit. So we've recommended waiving those fees, and then while working on that, we discovered that the work permits have a $450 variable fee, and the, um, minor work permit, in my opinion, should not be that high, so we've recommended a lower fixed fee, $225, which is in line with simple permits like signed permits, abandoned property registration, and things that typically take, you know, one to two hours of staff time. So we've recommended those three, um, items.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions of the staff? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That is correct.
Okay. Public hearing is now open, and I have some cards here. Brian Akins.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item actually didn't come before the Historic Preservation Commission officially. However, I was aware of it because of a request someone had made from the Terramina to be notified of permits, and the person at the desk, Cheryl, mentioned the minor work permit to me and how that we can be made aware of those. So, so we were aware of this, uh, the pavers being put in over the concrete, just mentioned it as a matter of information on people finding out about permits, major permits, which are more visible, minor permits, which is on, which are loaded, located on the city worksite. Um, I also heard about the, uh, issue that came up with the screen door and the $675 fee for that, so I applaud reducing the 450 down to 225 dollars. Uh, again, I'm speaking just as an individual on the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, not as the chair, because again, this hasn't come before us. I did note in the information that even these minor work permits will be carefully reviewed to make sure that they are minor and not being snuck in under the minor item, uh, major items would, or permit items would then go before the Historic Preservation Commission, I think, both as a part of the Terramina Historic District guidelines, as well as the new Cultural and Historic Resource, uh, Code section. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Sherry, is this Fiorentino? Did I get close? Welcome.
Hello. Um, my name is Sherry Fiorentino, and I live at 36 Terramina. I'm on the board for the Terramina Manor House, and I just found it ironic that this falls under the municipal code title for public welfare morals and conduct, when it completely reverses the assurances that the city council and the HBC gave the residents of Terramina on what would fall under the purview of the HBC regarding, uh, any changes to the properties. However, even though I hope this will honor the original agreement adopted regarding Terramina Historic District, this lengthy process that has been forced upon us has put our current 73-year-old arthritic tenant at risk for falls, as she now must traverse up and down the ripped-up driveway. Uh, she cannot go into her home in the dark or leave in the evening because it's all torn up. We also are unable to finish the work and have the tenant that is Section 8 move in to the forward unit, and she has now been homeless for, she's 73 as well ironically, and she's been homeless for 10 days. Uh, as you know, Ojai has very little affordable housing, and we are trying to do our part and aid those in need. The saying is that it takes a village, but it should also include a good city council to make sure the villagers can help in a timely fashion. We therefore request you honor the city staff's suggestion regarding Terramina Historic District and allow us to remain under the original agreement immediately and allow us to finish laying the driveway and refund our fees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Sue Williamson? And followed by Julie Osinski? Usinski?
Yeah.
Again, come on down, there's a chair up front here.
I'm here today to ask that the Terramina Historic District ordinance immediately be put back to what was the original agreement between the city and the community. Unbeknownst to me, in the Terramina community, the HPC put amendments in the HP ordinance that totally changed the Terramina Historic District, giving the HPC regulatory powers over virtually every square inch of Terramina properties, consequently adding huge fees and long delays to maintenance and repair that was never intended to be included and was in fact promised to us would not be included. It's bad enough that Terramina doesn't meet historic district architectural qualifications and that it was rammed through without the city following the legally required processes, along with numerous other egregious acts that I won't go into here. But now, to find out that the HPC has violated the original agreement and totally overstepped its bounds, while not surprising me, is adding insult to injury and must be corrected, as I see your staff has attempted to do, and I applaud that. However, in general, the HPO is a perfect example of Orwellian doublespeak and obstruction. Coming under Title IV Welfare Morals and Conduct seems almost laughable, as we experience a total lack of consideration of the welfare of a Section 8 tenant left homeless due to delays caused by this amended ordinance. Doublespeak, here's one example, Section 4-8-15E. Work permits for work on non-character-defining elements or non-contributing structures are not evaluated for preservation, but only to ensure compatibility and appropriateness with the architectural and historical elements of the landmark, so as not to adversely impact the landmark's historical architectural significance or integrity. So in one sentence, they are not to be evaluated, and then they are to be evaluated based on someone's arbitrary and subjective assessment of what is appropriate and compatible. This is contradictory and arbitrary. We also discovered that the ordinance requires that a decision on a minor work permit must be toasted online for public and HPC objections or concerns for 15 days. However, if there are no objections or concerns raised, there is still another 10-day required for any appeals to the decision. Now I ask you, does this make any sense? I mean, how can you appeal an objection if there's no objection made? This is another example of unnecessary delaying and doublespeak. We request that this be immediately suspended so that we can finish the driveway and get our tenant in ASAP. These are just two examples of the other nonsense contained in the amended HPO. I didn't read the whole document, but if this section is any indication, it seems the whole ordinance needs serious revising. And finally, just to be clear, the original THP ordinance limited HPC regulation of Terramina to five things: street lamps, exterior colors of the houses, roof lines, windows, and shutters, the latter three items only on things visible from the street. Landscape, driveways, sheds, carports, et cetera, were exempt, as were all non-contributing and non-character-defining elements. It should go back to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You support the change, okay?
Yes.
Right. Julie, you're up, and Valerie, you're, uh, you're next. Valerie James, yeah?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Julie Osinski, I'm residing at 36 Terramina Lane, and today I'm reading a prepared statement from Eileen Bunner. She is a board member of Terramina Theosophical Community Incorporated, also, of course, in support of item two. We are extremely confused by the council's use of the word "structure" in relationship to the driveway at 87 Terramina Lane. Typically, unless specified, unless specifically defined as a structure in the ordinance, a driveway is not considered a structure. We are also concerned about classifying the driveway as a landmark. There are no landmarks, in fact, in Terramina at all. It is definitely not a landmark in any sense of the word. Finally, we are highly troubled by the fact that we can, without any fees or delays, replace a poisonous asphalt driveway with more poisonous asphalt, whereas if we replace it with environmentally sound pavers, the city is imposing a permit fee of $450 and a $200 administrative fee. This action is counterintuitive to this council's mandate to serve and protect the residents of Ojai, and in particular, Terramina Lane. We therefore request that you refund all fees for the permit and the driveway, for the driveway, amend or remove the language in the ordinances that you feel allows the city to impose such fees and allow work to commence immediately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Valerie, you're up.
Hi. I also live at 63 Terramina, and I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Committee, and I don't remember this coming before us, and, uh, so I know that, uh, I do, I have studied other historic districts, one of them being the Denver Historic District, which they have 52 historic districts in Denver, and, um, only contributing properties are subject to additional design review, and only on character-defining elements in every historic district I've looked at. Um, and if, for an example, in Denver, they had a specific section on security storm and screen doors, and they said they do not require a permit, which is my, my thing, and therefore may be installed with no involvement from the city in any of the historic districts in Denver, or just regular houses. Why would there be a minor work permit for a screen door? That needs to be reviewed as well, is what constitutes a minor work permit. And, um, non-contributing properties, which is mine, are never subjected to design review. Again, just to reiterate, and contributing properties in historic district are eligible for TOCs credits, but non-contributing properties are not eligible, therefore, there's no break, they're actually getting, there's no break at all for charging them for work permits, but with the other properties, they do get up to a 20% tax credit. That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's all the cards I have, so...
I submitted one, sir, on time. My card.
Just calm yourself, calm yourself. Those are all the cards I, hang on, hang on. Those are all the cards I have so far.
Yes, sir.
Does the clerk have any other cards?
Cards, or can you call their names?
Or is this for, is this for this item or for public comment?
Apparently, public comment, my apologies.
Okay, that's fine, okay. Anybody else out there who submitted a card for this public hearing that I haven't seen? Okay, we'll close this hearing, and we will get to the public comment, okay? So, the public hearing is closed, the council will now deliberate. Bill?
I was wondering if I could circle back to a question to staff?
Sure.
Um, you know, I'm trying to decide how much of this is a, um, a matter of staff protocol issue and how much of it is an ordinance issue, all right, and those are different things. In particular, um, in the, the language that was brought up by one of the people testifying about any non-character-defining element of a landmark or any non-contributing structure in a historic district does not require a work permit as defined herein, that means no fee, right? Or not.
It'd mean no...
In terms of, uh, a non...
Are you reading from subsection C?
Yes.
Which begins with ordinary repair and maintenance.
Ordinary repair and maintenance on any, on the same, or any non-contribu, yeah, in other words, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to the, get to the example of what house staff is defining ordinary repair and maintenance. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, that's fair, but yes, ordinary repair and maintenance, as defined in the ordinance, does not require a work permit, and therefore does not require a fee.
Right. And so, on the screen door issue, okay, that was a staff interpretation, is that not be, as being not ordinary repair and maintenance?
Yes, the way ordinary repair and maintenance has been, uh, defined to date is that replacement of, actual replacement is not ordinary repair and maintenance, so replacement of one item with a completely new item is not ordinary repair and maintenance.
But that's a staff interpretation.
That's been, yeah, that is the way it's been interpreted.
So in other words, uh, if someone has a rotted door, and they want to replace the door, uh, it's a staff interpretation that that's not ordinary repair and maintenance?
Correct.
Okay. But that's something that could be changed just by staff protocol?
It could.
Definitions, right?
It could. I guess the, the, uh, the only challenge at this point is that there have been several years of following that process, so we would need to, to define that first step.
Bill, may I add something to that?
Yeah.
Just, would, if, if there is a, if there's a problem with the interpretation, because that's essentially what you're saying, um, would it be more appropriate to amend the language of the statute or to change a protocol with the staff if we were trying to achieve the goal of changing the interpretation of the staff?
It would depend on your goal, of course. If the goal is to solve the screen door issue, which perhaps the idea of a...
Or that class of issues.
Or of that, not just that one, but like-for-like replacement, even to include full-on removal of a, of a component and replacement with a new component, as long as it's like-for-like, same material, same, so forth, that could perhaps be defined as ordinary repair and maintenance through a, an administrative policy adopted by the director.
Right.
The second issue that's, that drove what we have tonight is not like-for-like, it's replacement with one material with a new material.
Right.
That is a different issue.
Right. Good. Mayor?
Yeah.
You know, it's interesting, like-to-like or purpose-to-purpose, um, because whether it's asphalt, concrete, paver, DG, road base, um, the purpose is inegreous onto the property and off the property. So I don't, I don't know, um, why they all wouldn't be equal. That's, that's one thought. I think we need to go back to character-defining, um, elements, along with what Councilman Wyrick is talking about, is, um, are screen doors a character-defining element? Because I don't think they are. And so I don't know if changing a aluminum door with a wood door, um, again, goes back to purpose. Um, you know, they're, they're to keep things out and keep things in, um, whether it's aluminum, whether it's wood, whether it's fiberglass, it seems the purpose has to be applied to the interpretation here. So again, maybe this is what, what Councilman Blatz is talking about, is maybe we need to review that and actually get a better understanding of what the character-defining elements are and aren't. That's, I, I think that's one thing that we need to do, um, because I think there's a lot of gray here, and I don't, and, and I don't, I don't think we want staff interpreting, I think we want staff, um, understanding the ordinance and applying it properly.
Now let me, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
Let me, um, maybe I can add some clarity to all this, because I am, I, I was contacted by the Terramina people regarding this and did a little bit of a deep dive into what the language exactly is. What we have currently, and, and by all means, Matt, if I'm mistaken about anything, please let me know, there is a major work permit, a minor work permit, and a situation where no work permit is necessary. If it is character-defining where the work's going to be done, it's going to require a major work permit. If it's non-character-defining, then it still may require a minor work permit, unless it is ordinary repair and maintenance. But the language says, if you replace something, even if it's better, or even if it's new, that's, the interpretation has been, even if you replace it with something equal but better, or anything that's brand-new, that is not ordinary repair and maintenance, and that requires the minor work permit. And the cost for that was the $450, and is one thing we're discussing. So I agree with you, I think we're all on the same page, at least what we're talking about so far, is that the major, and that's if it's character-defining that needs that major work permit, we're not really discussing that. But if it isn't character-defining, then what qualifies as ordinary maintenance and repair? And it would sure make sense to me that if somebody wants to put in, on a non-character-defining driveway, a better material, that we would all agree is a better material for the environment, for the situation, and it's not going to cause a delay, they're still required, even though no work permit may be required if we change the language to that, to come into the city and ask them first, because they're in a historic district. And then the city says, no, you don't need a permit, and they could go on their merry way, but they always have to ask. Here, they came in and asked, and they found out, no, because you're replacing it with newer, better materials, not just fixing it, but replacing it with newer, better materials, now you gotta kick in this whole permit process. That is not, I don't think, what this council intended. I personally don't like it, and if we want to talk about the screen door part, I don't even know where that came from. I specifically asked when we decided to amend this about that situation. If somebody has a broken window or a broken screen door, are they gonna have to go and replace it because it's new? And the answer from the staff at that time was, no, they would not. And then the interpretation was different.
That's exactly right.
James, I know that wasn't necessarily you, but as someone who has been passionately behind these Terramina people and understand the, the, we all respect the process and that it's been voted on, but they went through a lot, and there were a lot of irregularities in the way this council decided on their historic district. It does not seem to make sense to punish them for improving their property in a way that we'd all kind of agree with. So I think that, I agree, I think that normal, ordinary repair and maintenance may need to be expanded for non-defining characteristics, to include if it's the same purpose, or heck if it's better, then we shouldn't be charging people extra, because the Terramina people understood this before, they might have gone with a, whatever would have not required a permit, and put in something not as nice, and why would we want them to do that?
So, I'm gonna offer a, a motion to maybe capture what we're saying, see if you agree with it or not. I'm gonna make a motion that we, um, first direct the, um, staff to come back with clarification in terms of interpretation and, and protocol, and a further recommendation as to what can be handled by simply interpretation, uh, policies, and what needs to be fixed by ordinance change. I, I think that's the first part of my motion, if that makes sense?
I understand that, yes.
Okay. And the second would be to accept the recommendation to, um, that are included here in terms of setting the low fixed fee for minor work permits.
Did you want to change the fee?
Well, I'm gonna, I...
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you want to amend this and add, maybe the fees on this instance?
Well, I think we've already, we've already decided, that's in the recommendation to refund the fees.
Right.
But I was thinking, rather than the 225, a motion would be 160 instead of 225 for a minor work permit.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
I agree.
So that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on...
Mayor, I just have one more question to staff. I, I just wanted to clarify the, uh, the process here. So, um, an individual from Terramina will come to you to, to building and safety or planning, um, with what they would like to change. Planning then determines major, minor...
Or nothing, or ordinary repair and maintenance.
But, okay, then, um, then from that point, it goes to HPC?
It depends on what it is.
If it's required to have a permit, then it goes to HPC?
No, it depends on which permit. Only major. Major work permit goes up to HPC.
All right, so let's say some, okay, let's say it's a major then. I just want clarification on this for my own self. So it's, so H, so major goes to HPC, and they, um, how long do they have to respond to it?
So the major goes to an actual HPC meeting, and the minor doesn't, it gets posted...
I got that.
Which is why there was questions about that 15-day period.
Well, because that's one of the complaints here also, is the timeline.
Yeah.
The fact that, that by the time they come to you, by the time you make a decision, by the time it goes to HPC, by the time they have, um, a ruling, and then they have a grace period, that we're, we're talking a long period of time...
And that's what I would hope that staff could come back with, maybe some recommended changes to clean that up.
So I just think that should be part of what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, if there's any absurdity in the timeline about an appeal to an objection, when there's no objection, we should limit that as well.
Okay.
But by, by narrowing down the scope of what is, requires the minor work permit, that will most, that will solve a substantial part of the problem.
Okay, good.
Okay, does the staff have any, uh, question of the council as to the direction there will be given, assuming this passes, which I, okay? Okay, is there, if there's...
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I guess it, because it came, what, from a public hearing, you want a roll call?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's easier to call the roll and then decide the issue. Go ahead, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, when, when do we expect this to come back?
Ma'am?
I think we could probably return this fairly quickly.
Yeah. Well, because we're asking the waiting question, do we need to, is there any interim thing we need to do to make sure that this problem doesn't raise its head before we get a chance to review and, and handle this?
I think the interim component is the reality that this, the code enforcement team understands the council's priorities and where they lie and where they do not lie.
Okay.
But I do want to remind everyone, in the historic district, it's still, even if you believe that you're not going to need a permit, it does require you to come to the city to ask.
Right.
So that is still going to be a requirement that's there. Doesn't mean you'll necessarily have to get one, we'll see how that pans out, but you do, if you're in the historic district, for any changes to the property, pretty much you gotta come in for everything.
And, uh, so is their project on hold, or is their project moving forward?
Yeah.
And we're coming back?
So, we, we, they actually had submitted a work permit that we're gonna refund the fees for, so it is moving forward.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, and is that possible to expedite based on the conversation here?
I will expedite as much as possible.
Okay. Very good.
Unscheduled items.
Okay, we, I think we'll go to public comment, uh, Sue's favorite part of the evening.
It is.
Do we have some public comment cards? I know I have at least one in the front row here.
We will not forget about that one.
Yeah. Well, we'll start with the librarian, Ron, come on down.
Ron.
And, uh, Brian, you're next.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of council. My name is Ron Salorsano. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley, and I wanted to share with you all, first, a bit of exciting news that's come up. Some of you may already be aware, but our Ventura County Library's new mobile library has been coming up to Ojai this last month. It has currently one regularly scheduled stop. Uh, it is on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, uh, from 3:00 to 5:00. The mobile library visits the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation's Montgomery Oaks Family Apartments, uh, complex. Uh, so they head out there with the mobile library, it's got a couple of, uh, staff there with it, and they have library materials for checkout, they have usually some sort of craft that they bring, uh, they're getting set up to do early literacy classes for kids, so there's a lot for kids and families to do, we can make library cards onsite. It's just a really exciting development, we're happy to have it here, so, uh, if you all want to check that out, again, second and fourth Tuesdays, uh, 3:00 to 5:00 PM over on Montgomery Street. Uh, so we can always get you more information on that as well, if you'd like. Uh, other sort of county-wide things I wanted to mention, One County, One Book, of course, is getting closer. Uh, the One County, One Book selection this year is Susan Orlean's, uh, newest, uh, title, The Library Book, and in addition to everything that we're gonna be doing with the library, there are a couple of other things that our partners are helping us out with, including a faculty panel at Cal Lutheran University that's gonna talk about the book. Uh, we're gonna have a couple of film screenings of the, uh, the 2018 movie, The Public, Emilio Estévez's movie, and then we're also gonna do, uh, some book discussion groups at our library branches, and then, of course, the author talk on November 2nd. And then, of course, the author talk on November 2nd. Susan Orlean will be at California State University Channel Islands for an event then. So more information on that is available on our website, and you can always contact me directly as well for that. As far as anything else, the Ojai library, we're sort of transitioning into another heavy programming period. We've just come out of summer, where we did a lot of our summer reading-type stuff. Over the next few weeks, we're going to be doing more at the library. We have, this coming Saturday, the 31st, we're going to have a workshop on navigating the college application process, and specifically the college application essay. That'll be this Saturday. The following Saturday, September 7th, we're going to have an author come in to discuss a book of his about a pilgrimage he took with his wife across Spain. And after that, we're going to have a, let's see, psychotherapist and an Europa University faculty member, Harmony Quicker, is going to be visiting on September 13th to talk about her book, Reveal: Embodding the True Self Beyond Trauma and Conditioning. Should be interesting. And then, the last thing I'll say, on September 14th, which is a Saturday as well, is going to be the first of our CSU Channel Islands lectures coming back to the library. So a lot going on. Our website, www.vencolibrary.org, has all of our event information, and again, you can always contact me with questions.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
And thank you for cleaning up the grounds.
Yeah, it looks good, Ron. I got a chance to move it down, too.
Okay, Brian, you're up, and Vanessa Chadwick, you are on deck.
So keeping my historic preservation chair hat on, I will remind folks, including those that weren't paying attention earlier, and may be watching this telecast, that the Paver Project never came before the Historic Preservation Commission period, or Commission period. The only reason it was mentioned was that a Teramina resident had called me and asked, how can I see the information on different permits? And so I called over, I talked to Cheryl, she gave me great information on how we see major work permits, they just need to sign up for the agenda that comes out. And minor work permits are only on the city website. The minor work permit that existed at that time was the Paver Project. Again, as city manager will confirm, it was only mentioned as examples of how to see permits on the city website. However, we did have another major work permit that came before the Historic Preservation Commission. This was a small addition to a home that was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission and passed unanimously. So, and that was on August 8th, several, more than 10 days ago. Now, switching hats to the, as the treasurer of the Historic Preservation, or treasurers of the.
Museum?
Library, yeah. Next thing you know, I'll be calling balls and strikes.
Oh, yeah, right.
On August, August 6th, sorry. I'm coming after my commission just.
Which one do you hold on now, Brian? Just a second.
Yeah, museum.
Okay, museum, good.
There you go, there you go. History, I love history.
That man some water.
August 16th, the museum opened our current exhibit with Ojai studio artists. Their theme is origins. We had a really nice, nice town talk in talking about that at the museum. But there's another town talk coming up on September 29th. Again, town talks are Sunday from 4:30 to 6:00. That will also involve another key component of the Ojai studio artists discussing their works, and their thoughts that went behind that. Another, let me just go back to August 16th, Ojai Studio Art exhibit opening, 248 people in attendance that night. I was unable to be there, we were at a niece's theater production in Friday, but it was standing room only and then some. A lot of people were bringing their friends back to see us, so we're happy about that. We, in trying to reach out to other people, we did do a dance party about a month and a half ago. Seventy-two people attended that, including multiple generations. It was so good that we have another dance party that's coming up, September 6th. And so we invite you to that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, Vanessa Chadwick, you are up, and is it Thomas, is it Ecklinger, doctor?
Any way you want.
Well, how do you like it?
Medium rare.
Okay, Dr. Medium Rare will be following the current speaker, I think.
Am I only allowed to speak on one, one subject?
You just have three minutes to cover whatever you have on your mind.
Okay. You know the school bell at the Chaparral, the Chaparral School, 1414 school bell? It doesn't work, but I think that that's a historical monument, and that it should be fixed.
Okay.
And, hold on. The watchtower bells, it's beautiful, they've been playing music, but like today, they went off at, at 12 o'clock, and they normally go off at 8:00, and the music was real low, so I don't know if they're connected or something, but something keeps like changing it, so. And the bathrooms, you know where the, the lower court bathrooms are? No, no, actually, it's the upper court bathrooms by the, by the gazebo. There's no doors on the boys' bathrooms. It's like they're in jail or something. We need to fix the doors on the boys' bathrooms, they're horrible.
What have you been doing in the boys' bathroom?
None of your business.
I'll use the one down below then, where they have, I hope they have.
I think you can use whatever bathroom you want.
Okay, okay.
I think you can use whatever bathroom you want.
Okay, I apologize.
Like the Sarasodi bathrooms, those bathrooms are really nice, but in there, it's like, it's just crazy stuff.
Okay.
And then the other one is, you know how we have the Ojai Cap Center here, the Help Center of Ojai? Over by Ed's Recycling, their sign also says, the help of Ojai. It should say, the help of Miners Oaks, because that's Miners Oaks, not Ojai. So if somebody's looking on their GPS, they're getting confused on actually where they are. And then they have that, the old, the old women's jail there. I think that the proper authorities should rekey it, go inside and do a cleaning house, because somebody has a key to it. Because I used to work at Ed's Recycling Center, and I could tell that somebody was getting in and out of there, and I don't think that that's right. And those are my issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Thomas.
Hello, folks. Can we turn this off? And I think everybody can hear me. People at home can't. Audio, all right. I didn't know what I was going to talk about when I, an hour ago, but being assaulted today, before 6:00, sort of focused me. I was severely assaulted, pushed to the ground, I told I'm bleeding. I called the police before 6:00. That's, of course, the Jerrano County Sheriff's Department. I think we've never met, we've met before, you gave me a thumbs up, I think you're a good gentleman. I told the dispatcher that I was assaulted, I gave the address, gave the details, told them where I would be, which would be the club, Park.
Until 6:40, at which time I'd be walking to City Hall.
I was assaulted and sheriff has not shown up. Now, if that's proper sheriff care, then I wonder what the heck the city is, why did we hire that? So, what do I do? Do I call them again? That's not the point. The point is, I've been assaulted on several occasions, several of the merchants know me, I've been tainted because the sheriffs don't believe when I say I'm assaulted. So let's jump ahead, I think that next time the bid comes up as to who offers security for the city, the civilians band together, we have a car, and we could do a better job than the sheriffs. The sheriff that arrested me, at 347 South Quedlo in 2016, was called three or four times in the past two weeks when I was assaulted, including at our end at the hospital, Ojai's CMH, pushed me out the door. That's assault and battery, there was a camera running, I asked him to check it, he didn't. So what's the hardest harm that happens here, other than the tragic murder in Oakview? Used to be paraphernalia for drugs. Civilians could do a better job. I don't think civilians would talk civilians. So where are the sheriffs investigating my assault tonight? And I reported elder abuse at that address. So what's going on? Does anybody know? Does anybody want to call the dispatcher and see what time I called? And this was not, this was not my intended subject. This is what normally comes out in a deposition, when this will be filed in a federal court, filed by high school students here in county.
Okay, well, what is your topic for tonight? I would suggest you talk with the city manager if you have a complaint to register.
Right now, this is.
No, no, not right now, that he is the city manager right now, but later.
Anybody in the public, up sitting out here, or you?
Yeah. What is, what is the rest of your, your topic that you wanted to cover?
Other topics?
Yeah, you're just about out of time here.
Well, when is the sheriff going to take my side of the story? I was assaulted.
Well, you'll need to, if you will talk with the city manager and the chief of police, they will give you an answer to that.
The chief of police is on duty right now? I don't think so.
Yes.
Are you the chief of police?
I'm the chief of police.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, well, your time is up, Thomas, and thanks for coming down.
Your most welcome.
Okay, Nick Oatway, are you out there, Nick? And Michelle Ellison is on deck.
My name is Nick Oatway, I'm a local architect from the greater Ojai version, region. I'm not here to talk about conflict, though. My major reason for being here is my interest in seeing affordable housing happen in Ojai. My second reason is, two years ago, when I was talking with the then superintendent of schools, Ojai Unified School District, an idea came to me, like all of us get ideas now and then, that you don't know where they came from, but they just popped into your head. Maybe not divinely inspired, but at least, you know.
We get a lot of that on Tuesday nights, yeah.
And, and I, so I have a thought that you have an opportunity, like very few towns, to look forward to. And part of, part of my issue of being an architect is I like to look ahead, and I'm always thinking improvement. It's sort of like almost a disease, you know, you're always, everything you're looking at, you're improving, one way or another, whether it can actually be done or not. And so I had this conversation with the then superintendent, and I put together, based partly on the fact that it was 100 years since Libby rebuilt the downtown, and put his stamp on it, which we've all been fussing over ever since, right? And my, my excitement in your opportunity, and I applaud you for your present efforts in reaching out to the school district, to listening and respecting them as people with their issues, et cetera. You have an opportunity like very few city councils will ever have. Half, almost the size of your present downtown center is sitting right next to you, half empty. And you have an opportunity for thinking about, how would you like to see people 100 years from now enjoying downtown Ojai? Will they still be fighting traffic? Will they still be fighting asphalt, or climate change, or all these other things? So in any case, I, we have a new superintendent of schools, who is very open, and I just want you to keep in your heads the chance for a collaborative effort with them to solve their issues, but to create a picture for the town. And if you're interested, I did a, at that time, 2017, has to be updated, but I have a couple of sheets here from a 12-page report that I made at that time.
Okay, would you like to submit that to our clerk?
And anyone, any of you who are interested, I'll leave enough copies.
Please, thank you.
For everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay. Thanks.
Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work.
Slow but good.
Hi. Should I start, or wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, hit it, Michelle.
Right. Good evening, I'm Michelle Ellison, a resident of Ojai. Right now, Ojai has the opportunity to lead the way on building decarbonization. This is an immediate and significant action our community can take to respond to the climate crisis by reducing building emissions. Residential and commercial buildings are one of the largest sources of carbon emissions in California, and roughly half of building emissions come from onsite combustion appliances like gas or propane furnaces and water heaters. The California Energy Commission, CEC for short, adopted a new building energy code, which is Title 24, Part 6, that will go into effect on January 2020. However, the new code does not reduce carbon emissions as much, emissions as much as necessary to achieve local climate action plans and climate, state climate goals. That said, cities and counties can drive carbon reductions in their building sector by adopting a local energy ordinance, also known as a REACH code. The immediate opportunity is for Ojai to adopt a decarbonization REACH code that would go into effect January 2020, in place of the new statewide code. By going straight to this REACH code, instead of adopting the statewide code first and a REACH code later, which we could do, local jurisdictions can avoid multiple changes for city and county staff, local builders and contractors, saving time, money, and getting a head start on their climate action plans. REACH codes can cover not just new residential homes, single-family and low multifamily, low-rise multifamily, but also mid- and high-rise multifamily, commercial buildings, and even existing building retrofits. Here are some of the key reasons we need to phase out gas. One, it's polluting and driving climate change. Two, it's harmful to our health and our safety. Three, it costs no more to build a very low emissions building from the start, but it can quite, be quite costly to retrofit an existing building later. Four, to achieve the Paris climate goals, building emissions will need to be reduced by 90% or more by 2050. To avoid the costs and challenges of retrofitting new homes and buildings by 2050, it's important to build them today with 2050 in mind. Five, gas pipelines to new homes are expected to become stranded assets as more buildings electrify over the coming years. Stopping investments in new gas infrastructure is a no-regrets and fiscally prudent strategy to avoid saddling ratepayers and taxpayers with the cost of maintaining and ultimately decommissioning stranded gas infrastructure. Six, with a rapidly decarbonizing electricity grid, space and water heating buildings is quickly becoming a large source of building emissions. Wrapping up. Currently available, high-efficiency electric heat pump technology can reduce carbon emissions by 50% or more relative to the most efficient gas-fired alternatives. And as the grid continues to get cleaner over time, in Ojai, we're benefiting from 100% clean energy, electricity, emissions from electric heating will continue to drop. High-efficiency electric heating can also lower utility bills, provide better comfort in a healthier and safer living space, reduce air pollution, and improve public health and climate resiliency. In closing, you may have heard that the city of Berkeley just banned gas in new homes. San Luis Obispo will be voting on a REACH code incentivizing building electrification at their council meeting next week. And there are over 50 other cities in the state looking into various REACH code options. Ojai should be among them. I urge you to prioritize this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, that's all of the public comment cards. We are now back on the regular agenda, and we are at number three, is that right? Introduction of ordinance to the city of Ojai, amending Chapter 26. Mr. City Manager.
This item consists of two issues related to hemp.
Missed a card.
Hold on, we got one more.
Sorry, sorry, James.
That's okay.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Shalom.
Computers are helpful unless stuff's on them.
I'm Shalom Joshua, I live in the city of Ojai. There's some news regarding 5G, significant news. It begins with a court judgment that took place on the 9th of August, just about three weeks ago. The Federal Appeals Court in Washington, DC, came down against the FCC in its plan to force a rapid rollout of 5G technology across this nation. They called the action of the FCC capricious and arbitrary. They pointed out that it was in violation of standing federal laws. Those are the laws known as the National Environmental Policy Act and the National Historical Preservation Act. In effect, they said, you cannot go ahead and pretend that this massive change in technology can be rolled out without any meaningful review, when the potential for abuse and damage to the public and to the environment has not been eliminated. We need to have that review. No, the FCC and the major mobile technology companies, you cannot do that. So I take that as an important step on behalf of the public, and one that probably isn't well-known. It happened just three weeks ago, how it'll be countered remains to be seen. There is other news as well. For a long, long time, and I remember bringing this up myself at this council, there has been the perception that people are not allowed to talk about the health aspect of wireless technology. This is not true. It is not legally true. There is nothing in the 1996 Telecommunications Act, which is the basis for what we've been told, that says you cannot discuss health issues. The only language involved in that act uses the term "environment." So in a court filing that was done in federal court in New Mexico earlier this year, it was pointed out that unless there has been a litigation to change the meaning of the term "environment" and have it somehow be construed as "health," that it is not the same as "health," and since the word "environment" is the only active word in the Telecommunications Act, there is no written prohibition against the public discussing the health impacts of telecommunications such as 5G. This is a major thing. We have been sold a bill of goods, people. We have been given a campaign slogan that has been against our own best interests as well as against the Constitution. One further thing.
Okay, well, can you wind it up?
Yes.
Go ahead.
One further thing, and this is just to bring it home. The health aspects, people are wondering, what's the difference between 4G and 5G? Well, 5G is what powers airport scanners. If you want one of those on your block or in front of your house, that's what 5G will give you. Otherwise, not a good idea.
Okay.
Question of the speaker, Mayor?
Yes, Shalom, question.
Quick question. Was there a stay or an injunction associated with the August 9 ruling of the Court of Appeals of any, of any kind?
No, it was being remanded back to the FCC.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I assume that as soon as there's a change in the law, the city attorney will be back to us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've been monitoring that one, and fortunately, there is no stay that yet changes the ground, but I will note that we hope that comes. It's a positive development for sure, and as the council's aware, and I think the public is as well, the city has one of the strongest limits on 5G as adopted in the state, us and some cities out of Marin County, that limit it to only non-residential areas. That has not been challenged by any of the cities in this state, and in fact, recently, one of the carriers pulled out of one of the Marin cities, not acknowledging, or effectively acknowledging their ban, although not, nothing's been blessed by a court yet. The matter is being litigated out of New York and Rochester, and we're awaiting a decision out of that case as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any other cards? Okay, if not, okay, we are now going to item number three. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. So this discussion item is intended to allow council to do two things. One, introduce an ordinance revising the city's cannabis ordinance to remove references to industrial hemp from the definition of cannabis, and then, second, is to authorize staff to send a comment letter to the county board of supervisors regarding concerns with growth of industrial hemp within the city's sphere of influence. And essentially, in short, over the last month, we have learned that the county has permitted, what we were told by the agricultural commissioner, approximately 4,000 acres of hemp within Ventura County to be grown. There has recently been permits issued within the Ojai Valley, or a permit issued within the Ojai Valley. That causes us to go back and look at our cannabis ordinance, and go back and refine and recommend some revisions to address possibility of hemp being grown within the city. And then also, staff and several council members attended a meeting held by the agricultural commission regarding hemp concerns, and requested that the county consider regulations regarding issues such as smell, setbacks from schools, parks, and residences, and other possible regulations. Both farmers and the, or growers and the agricultural commissioner indicated that they were open to those regulations and would explore them, but we have prepared a letter requesting those regulations and possibly a moratorium while they're being prepared. So those are the two items before you.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Just clarification. This concern is mostly driven due to smell and the inability to distinguish between, the inability to, the smell and the inability to distinguish between industrial hemp, non, you know, non, what's the word? Anyway, and cannabis.
Yes, those were also concerns raised by the growers as well at these meetings and discussions, that to date, there is not a quick, easy way to distinguish some of these things, and then, they, the growers did note that there are strains that can be grown that have less smell, but right now, there's no requirement by the county or any agency to grow those lower smelling scents, or, I'm sorry, those lower smelling species of cannabis, or hemp.
Okay, so if that exists, does this ordinance and your letter address that, that if a remedy can be found, and?
The letter addresses it, we're requesting that the board of supervisors and the ag commission look further into those issues and consider regulations to that effect. The, our ordinance does not address it. Our ordinance essentially proposes to treat it as cannabis and not allow it to be grown within the city.
Would you agree that another, other concerns raised included control over air pollination issues, that the professional growers are very concerned about, including concerns about amateurs growing small plots in residential areas, near agricultural plots?
Yeah, that was, that was an interesting outcome from the meeting with the growers, is that the growers who are responsible, you know, professional growers, they even have concerns about just your average person going out and trying to grow hemp and not knowing the, you know, the intricacy associated with it. So that's why they also were in favor of some of these regulations.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Randy?
We did ask for a moratorium when we were in that meeting, and you could hear the moaning all the way to Sacramento. The growers wanted to not stop, and to take a step back and recognize that there are some issues, especially in their relationship to schools and other public environments. So it's full tilt ahead right now. There is an acting committee, and I believe our city manager is on it. I think our letter might be a little more strongly worded regarding the moratorium, and we can state the reasons why.
Okay, Randy, do you have any other questions of staff, and we'll come back to what's your.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I've got some cards here. Larry Hartman, you're up, and followed by Pat Hartman.
I'm Larry Hartman, 207 Boardman Road in Ojai. Thanks for being here tonight, appreciate your efforts. I have one page, so I'll be quick. Ten days ago, at the, at the Industrial Hemp Working Group meeting in Camarillo, at the agriculture commissioner's office, it became clear that hemp, excuse me, hemp cultivation has many as-yet unexplored issues. Having only been made legal in California in April of this year, odor is one of the issues. This issue snuck up upon us. We should have had time to plan properly and not put the cart before the horse and had adequate notification. I think a lot of people were surprised at this. But instead, it looks like county permits have been issued with few, if any, restrictions or regulations. Like most of us, I appreciate breathing fresh air. We have a lot to lose in our valley if it becomes contaminated with the objectional skunk odor of hemp. I'm sure some of you smell skunk for, of hemp. Let's learn from the mistakes of our neighboring carpentry, and some of their solutions. What's the solution? I believe in the free enterprise system, but some protection and guidelines are needed. It would make sense to put a temporary moratorium on hemp permits. This was suggested, and somebody yelled across the room at this meeting, forget about moratoriums, they don't want moratoriums, the growers. To put a temporary moratorium on hemp permits until some common sense regulations can be put in place. Restricting hemp growing near residential housing, that would be cities, schools, or parks, would also be reasonable to look at requiring buffering zones between hemp grows and citrus farms. Without some sort of responsibility plan, our air quality, health, property values, and quality of life will suffer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Pat Hartman, you're up, and Richard, does it, looks like Breslin, you're on deck.
I want to thank you for looking at this important issue, and it was great to see council members at this hemp growers workshop meeting. Unregulated hemp growing in the Ojai Valley will have a very negative impact, I believe, on our, in our environment, air quality, health, and our economy in Ojai. Our major concerns with it are, first of all, hemp stinks, literally. You know, it's the same plant as marijuana, only with a lower THC content. And today's hemp is grown for and has been genetically engineered to produce higher amounts of CBD, because it's used, being used today for CBD oil, you know, not for rope or fabric or anything like that. The strong smell of hemp can travel over 1,500 yards, and it causes headaches, nausea, and respiratory issues. Hemp stink is pervasive, and it doesn't recognize city borders. The second area of concern is with the environment. Ojai is a closed air shed, and cannot easily rid itself of air pollution. And we saw this in the aftermath of the Thomas Fire, where the smoke hung here in the valley much longer than in the rest of the county. The more acres of hemp planted in the Ojai Valley, the more our air quality will be adversely affected. No one wants our whole valley to start smelling like a skunk. A pervasive skunk smell like that in nearby carpentry, which you can smell from the freeway as you drive by, would adversely affect our health, quality of life, property values, and certainly, Ojai's tourism industry, on which we counsel heavily. We are literally fowling our own nest with this smell. Third, hemp is being grown where it doesn't belong already. Most people would agree that because of odor and health issues, hemp shouldn't be grown near schools, parks, churches, or residential neighborhoods. I think it's rather telling that the very first commercial hemp grow in Ojai has been on, planted on Boardman Road in a residential area, next to the Sieto Robles Track, which is in the city of Ojai, and it's also located right next to Soul County Park, which is used by children, families, the dog park, and schools, such as the Wheel Tennis Academy, ARC, and Ojai's Evolve Drug Treatment Center uses the park. Fourth, and this is an area that you may not have thought about yet, but we have, because I am a farmer, I grow pixie tangerines, my husband and I, just down the street from this first hemp grow. Hemp could push citrus from the Ojai Valley very easily. Ojai citrus groves are the valley's main tree canopy. They produce oxygen, and then they scrub the air of carbon dioxide. It is like our rainforest, it attracts moisture, without which the valley will become more prone to drought and become much more desert-like. Right now, Ojai citrus is in a real battle against a disease spread by the Asian citrus celid.
Pat, I'm gonna have to ask you to, can you wind, are you getting close to the end?
Yes, I'm, I'm very close. We are required by the Department of Food and Agriculture to spray our trees for this, for the Asian citrus celid. Hemp needs to be pesticide-free, so if hemp plants itself next to a pixie grove, who wins that battle? And, you know, pixie growers in Ojai, we grew 3.4 million pounds of pixies this year in Ojai. These are all small family farms, you know, where ranchers depend on that. So we're gonna have our own climate emergency in Ojai if citrus is forced out because of hemp, which could very easily happen. Okay, so that's.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Richard, you're up, and Jeff Crowell, you're on deck.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Richard Berschini. I lived in Greenfield, California, which is 230 miles north of here, for 39 years, and two years ago, I moved here to Ojai on Boardman Road. The reason I, one of the main reasons I moved from Greenfield, because it pretty much became the armpit of California, with the cannabis allowed to grow there, and the greenhouses there, and the smell was so bad that my wife and I moved here. And, and the sad part about it is, is being here in Ojai, I tell people, it's about as close as you're gonna get to heaven, I mean, as far as being in the southern part of Los Padres Forest, and, and what makes it so hard is, I know my neighbor, I don't know him that well, but I know he's a steward of his land, I know he doesn't mean any harm to his neighbors, and I'm saying that because I was a grower for 50 years in Monterey County, and I know where he's coming from, and I, and I also fear for myself and neighbors around Boardman Road. I know, I don't want it in my backyard, but yet, I see what's happening in the farming industry too, in Monterey County. I think hemp's, hemp's gonna be a number one crop. There was 120, or 165 million dollars last, lost last year because of the lettuce, E. coli outbreak in Yuma, and every grower's looking for an alternative to vegetable farming. And I just see it being a crop that's gonna be a number one in California. And what I'm trying to tell everybody is, it's so hard to be on both sides of the issue, and I just can't even explain what a mess we're in, you know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Richard. Jeff Crowell, and I got Brian, is it Edmonds on deck?
Good evening, council. Good evening. Well, here I am again. First off, I'm not here to either say pro or con about hemp, but I do want to do a little education. And one of the things you all need to know is that when Chernobyl happened, they planted 500 acres of hemp plants in and around the Chernobyl, it was highly radioactive. This plant is a miracle plant that could take all the pesticides that we currently have and contaminants out of our soil. We want to have a pesticide-free zone, but yet, of course, the citrus and the Asian bug with the citrus plants, we're being forced to use pesticides in order to control it. We don't have control over a lot of insects that come into our country, and we need to control those. The unique thing about hemp, and I've been in very big grows up in Canada, there are hemp seeds, and availability of three different universities now working on developing hemp seeds that don't have the terpene odor levels that regular cannabis has. It's literally about 20% of what a normal cannabis indica, or sativa, or hybrid plant. Second, most of the harvesting that's done is prior to some of the seed development, and also, the seeds is where we get hemp oil, omega-3, omega-6 fatty acids. The hemp oil that's being extracted for CBDs basically is from the leaf material. The canopy itself, if you plant the hemp plants close together, they only have a very small canopy. Now, granted, I understand everyone's concerned about the odor, but I haven't smelled anything yet, and maybe we should try to see what the effects are gonna be, and that's what I think the county was trying to do. One of the concerns in the legal cannabis market now is the spraying of pesticides on adjoining properties for other produce items, strawberry being one of them. It's one of the highest contaminant pesticide fruit that we eat. It's almost impossible to get the pesticides off of it. Unfortunately, one-third of us in this room, including me, will have cancer, and I had cancer in my lifetime. It's gonna go to 50%. The other thing that's a benefit about hemp is the water conservation. It uses one-fifth of the normal water because of the unique growing capability of this indica, sativa, and rudialis. Rudialis is the industrial hemp strain. It's the only plant on the planet, that if you look at a tree and it has 100-foot height, it only has one-third of its height above ground, underground. Hemp plants are different. For whatever the height is of the plant, that's the started root and the length going down underground to reach for water. So this is what Philip McGrath was really pushing, was during our drought tolerant time, we wanted to save water. we wanted to save water. If we really want to save water in this valley, we should allow hemp, and at least try it on an experimental, I think that's what the county is doing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Okay, Brian, you are up, and Catherine, looks like, is it Steer, Stir? No, Spear, maybe. I'm sorry, can't read the printing.
Good evening. Brian Edmonds on 202 Boardman Road. And I'll be very brief. I think the council is on the right track with city manager on requesting and working with the county of Ventura on a moratorium. I am on both sides of the fence. I'm a commercial farmer within the county and within the state of California. So I do understand the farming and the right to farm and what these guys want to do. But I think we have to be very cautious in the Ojai Valley. This is a plant that, we're not there yet, as the gentleman before me said, they can breed the smell out of these plants. We're years away from that. It's not there yet. So I think as a valley, as what we do, the citrus economics on citrus right now is not very good. Citrus farmers are losing money. I doubt the Ojai Valley on the East End this year on the Valencia crop is going to pay, they will make enough money to pay their water bill. So as you see this first plant come in, it could be the change in the landscape of the East End. So I think your support with the county on a moratorium until we get some control on this is helpful, and we appreciate your help on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, with Ron Boat on deck. Catherine, what is your last name?
Spear.
Spear, okay.
I had it right. I'm just here to speak. I was at the August 16th meeting with a couple of the folks here, and I live in the Siete Robles Track, which is, my fence backs into the owner of 1,000 Boardman. So the growth that he is planning in that orchard, we are going to smell it in our backyard. And I think part of it, too, is I heard we put the cart before the horse, is that there was no planning. We didn't hear about any of this. There was no outreach from our neighbor to even talk to us about it, despite what has been said. And I don't think that, I really don't think that anyone's arguing it's a bad plant. It's a matter of not having it near residents and not having it near schools. And like Brian said, it's years away from having the smell breeded out of it. You know, the one question I have is sort of a jurisdictional issue. If you pass this ordinance and you keep the growth of hemp in the city of Ojai, Siete Robles is actually in the unincorporated area. And 1,000 Boardman is actually sitting there, too. So how, if you happen to sort of rein in this one area, we're not protected. So, you know, we're with the county who's really pushing it forward. So that's one of my main concerns, and also, there's already growth happening at the property on 1,000 Boardman. If there is a stop, if we're able to stop it or postpone it, is he grandfathered in with what he's grown? So I'm just wondering, is it going to stall the plans? So those are two questions I have, but thank you for considering it.
Well, we have no jurisdiction, but the part of this motion is to communicate with the county and encourage them to be a little more cautious until this gets figured out and everybody gets educated.
We'll see. We did see they were pretty gung-ho, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ron?
Hello, I'd like to offer an opinion. I think you should go allow, allow the hemp grow on Boardman as an experiment and see how it goes. I think the hysteria over smell is way overblown. Hemp smell is very minor. Cannabis is strong. I mean, it's grown for its bud and the smell of its bud, and that's how come the whole skunk thing gets, this flavor, this skunk smell gets out into the environment, and hemp does not have that. When you go down Boardman Road, where you're talking about growing it now, there is quite a stable, a large horse stable, and it smells. And no one seems to be very upset about that, because we're used to that. Well, here's just maybe a tiny bit of a different smell. I think we need to be the change we want to see in the world, and it's time to take a step and see what happens.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other cards? That concludes all the cards from the public. We'll bring this back to the council for deliberation.
I have some questions, if I may. Well, I'm going to start with the premise that this council should acknowledge the tremendous benefits of hemp. The hemp is, we're just beginning to understand, and I am not an expert, I wish we had more expert testimony here tonight. I am in favor of reasonable regulations. I think those are necessary. But I think the day is going to come when we recognize just how toxic the world is and that this plant is part of saving the planet. We may not like the smell, but every day, we're breathing things that we can't smell that are known carcinogenics. Okay? So the smell is the least of my concerns. My first question is, what is the impact of a moratorium on the growers? What's the impact? What happens to the growers?
So, what we're doing within the city is, we currently don't have any permitted growers.
But countywide.
And so for countywide, we are requesting that the county consider a moratorium while they work on regulations. And they talked about, I think at the meeting, if not, it was my one-on-one conversation with the ag commissioner, that they talked about some different possibilities of if there was a moratorium and they just allowed the ones that preexist to continue, or if it would be, you know, if they would go further than that. But they have not been eager or willing to explore either of those ideas very far to date.
But before I could vote for a moratorium, I would need to understand what that moratorium is.
Okay, we won't be voting on a moratorium at this council.
But isn't that in the letter?
In the letter. Let's, okay, why don't we have a motion or something, so we can organize our discussion here? Do we have a motion?
Can we take up the letter first, then?
Okay.
That may make sense, because there's... Talking about the letter, so...
Okay, so we'll discuss the letter. Okay, so your concern is, what is the implication of a moratorium?
I need to know what the moratorium is.
Okay, I got it, I got it. I'm going to get you an answer to that. Matt, 45 days, is that usually what a moratorium?
Usually, it's 45 days. It would depend on how the county adopts the moratorium, and it's a little unclear what they would do. And the threshold question is, will they do anything? To date, they haven't been inclined to do anything, to be honest. But if they were to adopt a moratorium, which this letter would ask them to do, it'd be up to the county to structure it. I think it'd default, it'd be 45 days, just pause everything. Don't enforce it against the current growers, no new grows, take 45 days, figure it out. After that, the county could, for example, adopt a set of regulations allowing but regulating hemp growing. And then if they did that, then they would pare down the grows that don't meet the regulations. The county could also decide after that moratorium to adopt a ban on hemp growing, as has been done in some other counties around the state. And if they did that, then they might enforce it against the current growers. Or they could adopt a ban but apply it only going forward. Those choices will lie to the considered wisdom of the board of supervisors. I think the council, this council, can tailor the letter to ask for one of those levels of moratorium, or leave it a little more general and say, you need to consider a moratorium, you need to look at pausing, and then have the broader debate on the issues.
Yeah, I want to make sure that, may I? You know, I just want to make sure that the moratorium is not saying that we're in favor of a ban. I want the letter to make clear that we're not in favor of a ban, and if we don't make that clear, I can't vote for the letter.
Okay, Bill, you?
And I think that's exactly, really, the point, is that the initial rollout by the county of Ventura, specifically the agricultural commissioner's office, has been ministerial. If you meet the state, minimum state regulations, you get a permit. That's it, no matter what. No discretionary element whatsoever.
I'm favorable fixing that.
And the structure, I thought, was supposed to be, and it certainly was with cannabis, that you had your minimum standards set by the state, and then you had local discretion to tailor to your individual circumstances in your local area. That was not, is not the position of the agrocommissioner initially. I think it may be now. But the position initially was that we can't have any discretionary rules. We can't have any buffer zones. We can't have any mitigations. And I think that's the point of asking, and in fact, I was going to suggest some language, that we say, until appropriate regulations can be implemented, there should be a moratorium. Because I agree, I'm not against the entire concept of hemp growing by any means. But I am against the idea that it's ministerial without any regard for negative external impacts outside the grow areas to even be considered, and to abrogate that responsibility for local regulation that, in fact, is built into case law, as I think we got a briefing from the city attorney, that it is built into case law, to exercise that discretion. So I think what we're really doing, and I hope we can kind of common ground here, is say, county, use appropriate discretion.
Okay, Randy has a comment.
Well, along with that, we need to provide what some of those discretionary measures should be. So, Suze, to help, again, to help you understand some things, there were 300 permits for hemp a year ago. There's 4,000, or 300 acre feet a year ago. There's four...
Wait, wait, wait. Run that by me, then.
Through the chair, please.
300 acres a year ago, there are 4,000 acres of hemp under cultivation today. That's...
In Ventura County.
Ventura County. My gut says, after attending that meeting, that the county is not going to put a moratorium. What they're going to do is allow this working group to continue to work and maybe piecemeal some form of regulations. That's why we need to be adamant about taking a step back, not stopping the permitted crops right now. And in fact, as the one gentleman said, let's let those 4,000 acres be our guinea pig, and let's actually see what's going on out there. Because they're happening. They're growing. In fact, someone said, within a month, if not two months, they're going to be ready for their first harvest. So I think we have an opportunity here to be good stewards of our community and to identify the areas which we believe hemp could have a negative or an adverse impact. That's what this moratorium is about. That's what this letter is about. I don't foresee us stopping it, even to the detriment to this community. And when I say "community," I'm talking Ventura County.
And it's worth noting, a matter of fact, I might add to that, that the majority of counties in California believe they have the discretionary authority to do some regulation.
Right, right.
Ventura is a minority right now, in terms of, it's something of an outlier in terms of the statewide effort. And by way to give an order of magnitude, Ventura County right now has more permits than the entire state of Tennessee by itself.
Okay, I'm going to, before we continue, we're working on the letter, so let's have a motion first, if anybody wants to send it.
I would like to make a motion that we add some, one sentence to implement what we're talking about.
Do we have a, are you going to move with an amendment?
Send the letter with one amendment.
Okay.
And that is that on the last full paragraph, starting with "we urge," suggests that we say, prefaced, say, "until appropriate regulations can be implemented," comma, "we urge the Ventura County Board of Supervisors to impose a moratorium."
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
I have another amendment, though.
Okay, well, we can amend the main motion. Let's get something on the table. Okay, so the motion is there. Okay, Ryan, you want to...
Yeah, I, this letter constantly refers to industrial hemp for CBD oil purposes, and it's not simply for CBD oil. So I believe that that isn't an exclusive thing, so I think we ought to just include, we ought to make it only refer to industrial hemp.
I agree.
Industrial hemp, yeah.
There's no objection. We'll accept that as an amendment. Okay, now, with that as the matter before us, is there, are we ready for a vote as to whether we're going to send it or not? Or do we need more clarification? Ryan?
Since we're talking about the letter, I want to make this one comment. I just want to know, we've all, we've heard the public, we're all very responsive, just trying to figure out what to do. With the legalization of cannabis in California, these are some of the growing pains and the nuanced things we have to do. There is a lot of stress in our community right now. Citrus values are down, water costs are up, water mitigation costs are very high. I really respect the farmers in this valley for having a lot of pressure on them right now. In addition to that, there's a channel keeper case that is hanging over their head if they're pumping any water. There is an OB-GMA demonstration plan that was denied by the state, which may cause additional costs that most of those growers are going to have to deal with if it ends up being something that's expensive. Currently, according to our newspaper and research, they're saying CBD oil through the growth of hemp is at $50,000 an acre. And anybody in here who knows, citrus is doing maybe $20,000 an acre right now at best. We have to appreciate that this is a situation that could turn out of control for our valley very quickly. I am 100% in support of all of the benefits that there are from hemp, if it doesn't involve causing problems with the nuisance factor, the smell factor, or any other factors that are negative, and making sure those are mitigated. So I want to make it clear that, well, we, let's be personal, well, we're going to try and get the county to take a more serious approach to this and understand some of these concerns. Part of it is that we may want to help this situation at some point, to be able to allow this growth. This may be something that's positive, but we have to be very delicate with our valley. And we only control a tiny little portion, a little dab in the center. And with all of these pressures on our growers right now, we just need to make sure that we are assisting them where we need to, and we are regulating where we need to, the best we can. And unfortunately, like you all realize, most of that's out of our hands. These things don't happen in the city limits. They mostly happen in the county. So I think everybody needs to be aware. I think we all have to be open-minded to some extent, but also know that, you know, some of these things may create, I mean, you know, if we're talking about people ripping up plants and having to abandon farms in the future, you know, we may run out of options for other crops than this. So we got to figure out how to do this right. We got to take the time to figure out how to do it right. So no, we're not, I'm not against it. I think it needs to be studied properly, done properly, advanced properly. I appreciate the problems they have here, but I do want to make it clear that we're going to have to come back to this later. It's going to be something that's not going away. And the future of hemp growing in California and in this valley may be something that's very real, that we have to, at some point, accept, but we're not there yet, and we need to do it the right way. But I do want everybody to get, to understand that this solves a lot of problems for the growers in this community, and they're going to have a lot of pressure on them to look at this as an alternative in the near future. And we may have to make some really difficult choices. So we need to get ahead of this in the city. Work with the county, but I think we need to study it the best we can.
Yeah, okay, so now I will weigh in a little bit here. I agree with a lot of what Ryan is saying. I think one part, though, we should also be mindful of is that when you change the economics of crops, you also put more pressure on those who would want to be raising pixies or other, and take less profit. We also don't know what's going to happen on our water supply, but that's got to be, we have to be mindful of it. My understanding of this letter is simply to ask the board of supervisors to take a step back, pause, and have a public discussion. As far as we know, there's been no public discussion of this. I've talked to some friends who are very supportive of, they don't grow hemp, but they're supportive of the idea. And I said, okay, well, nobody so far has called me and said they were against hemp because it's hemp. They're concerned with what it is going to do to the air quality in the valley and to the property values, and which was very well-covered by a couple of our citizens here tonight on comment. So I don't think it hurt, we're not making the decision, or are we even drawing the conclusion at this point, because the discussion hasn't been held. And Jeff is the only one who came down, and Bill, his is at least tried to educate us a little bit about the pros and cons. But the board of supervisors, I think, has some responsibility, since they have jurisdiction over most of the agricultural land in the county, to at least have the conversation. Because the ag commissioner is always going to say, you know, the freedom to farm, and his allegiance is primary to the industry that he regulates, trying to regulate it in a positive and economically successful way. And he's not in the policy business, so it's up to people like us to raise the questions, and the board of supervisors to allow the public to weigh in, before it becomes so expensive to correct whatever mistake we might be making. So are there any other questions or comments?
A comment is just that it's not the fault of the growers that we didn't have the regulations in place. So I just want to make extra sure that our recommendation does not punish them in any way, that ultimately, it'll be for everyone's greater good.
But I think we should be proud of the fact that the Ojai Valley may well have provoked the public process. It needs to happen.
And as far, in our research, too, it should be known that there's no other city that is currently dealing with this problem. It's just us. Oxnard has most of those 4,000 acres, but they're in areas that we have, our research has shown that there wasn't a lot of public input, or they're not in areas that are affecting everyone. Not because it doesn't smell, or that it won't, just that it's not necessarily in the proximity like what we're dealing with here. And that's a real problem. I mean, we are, I think, at least, I know some of us have personally called the county to make sure that this is being addressed appropriately. I think the letter's appropriate. I think the letter is appropriate, understand our hands are tied, but we're gonna, you know, we're going to do everything to make sure we do this right.
And I didn't get to finish my comment, my other comment is, I keep hearing about hemp possibly ruining our air quality, I think we should distinguish between air quality and the way the air smells, because the air, because ultimately hemp is going to help us clean the air, okay, whether, you can laugh if you like.
It's a factor, though, in the quality, right? Would you agree to that? Okay.
I would rather smell-
You're mentioning words, but that's okay.
I would rather smell hemp than pesticides, you know, there's many, many ways, this is a huge topic, and none of us sitting here are fully informed.
But we agree there should be public process and regulations.
I, I agree, yeah.
Okay, well, I think we've hashed it out, no pun intended.
Whoa.
I got a million of them. I'm here every other Tuesday night, seven, go on and see me.
That's a different type of war.
Yeah, right, okay, please call the roar.
Smoking here, Hannah.
Councilmember Haney?
Pardon me?
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
This is just the letter, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Now we go to topic number two, which is whether or not we wish to clarify our own ordinance regarding growing in the city.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the recommendation of the staff.
May I make a suggestion for amending to be more targeted?
No, first we-
Because I wanted to just bring that up in discussion.
Please go ahead, sorry.
Okay. I, I fully agree with the point about the cultivation, for the reasons we've already stated. However, I'm a little concerned about just deleting the definition, because one of the reasons for having that definition as, does not include is that, and that became very clear in the industrial group discussion, hemp and cannabis are not the same thing. They're not the same legally, they're not the same genetically, in fact, hemp is no longer Schedule I in federal law, cannabis is. And what I'm suggesting is that in order to be targeted and focused on the purpose here, which is the cultivation, that we leave the definition as is, but in the prohibited cannabis activities, 4-26.03, where it says outdoor cultivation prohibited and commercial indoor cannabis cultivation prohibited, we simply say, no person may cultivate cannabis or industrial hemp as defined in Section 1101-8.5 of the California Health and Safety Code, outdoors in any district, and the same in C, where we simply say, we make it clear that it's cannabis or hemp in the cultivation that we're prohibiting, rather than conflating the definitions, because they are legally very different definitions.
Where are you looking?
The, the proposal in the staff recommendation is to delete-
What page?
Is, in the definition section, which is on page 3.8, attachment A2 of 5, is to delete the C1, that's the change, and where it says, you know, cannabis means all plants, cannabis does not include in Part 1 as industrial hemp as defined in Section 1101-8.5. The reason that's in there, I think, is because industrial hemp is an illegal class and definition of itself, and I think we could run into trouble with unintended consequences if we conflate defining cannabis as industrial hemp by deleting that section without, because they are defined legally so different, and that's what I'm suggesting, is that we accomplish the same end by simply going to the prohibited cannabis activities, and we could say prohibited cannabis and hemp activities, and simply say cannabis are hemp on the cultivation, rather than trying to say that we are going to define cannabis as including industrial hemp, which is legally not-
Okay, we've got it, let's go over to the city attorney, does, you understand what we're trying to achieve?
Yes, and this would be legal to do, it's within the Brown Act agenda item, because the agenda item was structured as amendments to Title IV, Chapter 26, so we're okay there, and this approach would be targeted, essentially would outright ban cultivation of industrial hemp in the city limits, as opposed to effectively banning cultivation of industrial hemp in the city limits by redefining cannabis as inclusive of industrial hemp.
Right, yeah.
And the, the one thing that this may benefit in terms of your broader policy discussion, particularly based on the discussion you've just had, that there's not necessarily consensus to ban hemp as opposed to allow it, but regulate it carefully, is that if two bills that are pending in the state legislature pass, as discussed in staff report, let me get the numbers right, SB 1-
Trust you.
-53 and AB 228, for those following along at home, if those two bills pass, then CBD products will be treated as any other food stuff. They won't, they will let alone be scheduled, they won't be treated as anything different than any other product, regular product. That would have a series of knock-on effects, one of the most important of which is, will the, would the council like, as part of its land use power, to add extra regulations on top that would say, for example, CBD products have to be sold in certain stores, or would you accept the state's policy judgment and treat them the same as anything else? If we simply amend the code as proposed with the alternative to only ban cultivation of industrial hemp, then it doesn't impact that broader discussion, whereas if the definition of cannabis is amended to delete industrial hemp from the exception, then that broader state law will have some unintended consequences.
Oh, I agree. Well, I think the simple answer is, if we, in 4-2601, our definitions, where it says cultivation, if we just add right after cannabis, industrial hemp is defined in section-
Right, that's all I'm saying.
That's it, and it, I don't know what section you were talking about before, unless I follow around, but in the definition section would be where I would recommend.
Yeah, leave the definition section alone and just change, put the change into 4-26.03.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if we change the cultivation definition in 2601 to add industrial hemp as not being allowed under cultivation, I think that's the simpler fix, other than in 3.
To avoid the argument, because the, the specific section regarding cultivation in 4-2603, which isn't in the packet, but is in the code, I would recommend that we also add the prohibition on industrial hemp there, not just in the definitions, to avoid an argument that the specific section, as opposed to the general definition, but the specific section governing cultivation, didn't expressly prohibit cultivation of hemp. If that's the goal, I should go there, too.
Okay, well, I don't have that in front of me, but I will say that if we define cultivation as including cannabis and industrial hemp, and we prohibited cultivation, I would assume that that would do all of it in once.
Yes, but I would recommend-
If that other section needs an amendment as well, we just, I can't see it, it's not in front of us.
Yeah, I, yeah, you want to- It's, right, I was just saying, it's-
I printed it out.
It's the code, but-
I have a question.
It's the belt and suspenders measure, I think it's stronger if we put it in both places.
I agree.
I was just, you see what I was saying, just adding, adding cannabis and-
Oh, and that one as well, yeah, except you wouldn't need to if you changed the definition.
Right, but I just, he said belt and suspenders to be-
I'm okay with both of them, yeah.
Okay, we're going to go with belt and suspenders.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, say someone lives within the city limit, and their neighbors are, they have quite a bit of land, their neighbors are far away, is your logic for this ban, you want to have a ban on growing industrial hemp, is the logic behind this because you're afraid of the smell, and because their law enforcement has difficulty telling, distinguishing between cannabis and hemp?
Yeah, you just hit on one of the key issues from staff's perspective, is that it would be very difficult for us to enforce the prohibition on cultivating cannabis if people could cultivate hemp, because it would be almost indistinguishable.
Outdoors. I was just going to say, we don't have any pending permits, so if somebody came to us wanting to do this, we could always revisit it, but we don't have that situation.
And there's the pollination contamination issue as well.
Yeah, and if we don't put anything on the books, then we're arguably-
And if at some point in the future, they breed the odor out of it, and the Board of Supervisors had this thorough public conversation, we can always change our laws to accommodate, but-
But changing the law is not so, so simple, I've discovered, sitting here. Why not have a moratorium instead of a ban?
Yeah. I, I wouldn't agree with that, I think we have a clear policy that we've been holding to with cannabis, and I think we want to target hemp the same way, inside the city limits.
Yeah, I just feel like, I personally don't feel that I know enough about the repercussions of this, because someone could have acreage that's highly toxic, you know, do the pesticides, and maybe they would like a permit to grow hemp for a year to clean things up.
Okay, and we're not going to know this, all that here tonight, so I, it sounds like you're not prepared to vote for the ordinance.
I'm not prepared to vote for the ordinance, yeah.
No, I'm fine, I'm ready to vote.
Should we have a roll call?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Okay, we are now on item number four, do we have any cards?
Hemp to pickleball.
Okay. Okay, Mr. City Manager, introduce the topic.
So, first thing I wanted to do quickly, because I don't, I haven't had the chance, but our new recreation manager, Renee Peace, is here today, and she, she actually has been working closely with the pickleball committee, she actually teaches at Cal State Northridge, went down and taught today and then came back because she wanted to be here for this, so I want to give her a little bit of credit.
Hi, thank you.
And then getting back to, to business, Renee and I have been working with the pickleball ad hoc committee, the ad hoc committee was formed a couple months back with the request from council to look into options for pickleball facilities within the city. The ad hoc committee has made a recommendation to designate the tennis courts here at City Hall as pickleball courts, which has some challenges that are mentioned in the report, but overall seems to be a good site for it. Some of the reports, or some of the challenges that we note and that we will have to consider is that there will be some cost to the city, and I did send out an updated cost memo and can provide that to you, that there's going to be some cost to the city. The pickleball committee has stated that they will fundraise to help raise some of the costs, and they will provide labor that will also help reduce the costs, but we're looking at probably between $10,000 to $15,000 in city costs. And then also, some concerns are, not concerns, but challenges with the location, as far as right now, there's, there's significant site work that would have to be done, soon, the site doesn't have maybe optimal bathroom or parking facilities, but they, there are some options there. And the other issue moving forward will be, as noted in the report, if council chooses to direct, you know, that the pickle, that the tennis courts be used as pickleball facilities, my recommendation is that the council find that this would be a minor work permit, because it does not adversely affect any character-defining element of the landmarked estate, going back to what we talked about earlier, and council could approve that and then authorize funds for the project to move forward. The pickleball committee and the pickleball advocates are planning to do a lot of the work, and they actually are ready to begin doing work now, so that's why I wanted to get this back to council, if we want to move it forward, they're ready and able to start working.
Okay, I have one card, if there are no, are there other questions of staff? If not, Brian Aiken. Your hat this time is what?
Hi. I am a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, Chair, but again, speaking as an individual member, one vote. I want to thank City Manager Vega for making me aware of this, and Louise, who I called this afternoon to try to figure out what the heck a pickleball court is, and then I did a YouTube video on what the heck pickleball is, and it was quite informative. So, of course, I was around when we landmarked the building and the grounds, we called out the tennis court, when I came in the other day on some other item of business, I did walk over to the, looks more like a decrepit parking lot over there on the side to see the tennis court. Again, going back to the discussion earlier, you're replacing asphalt, it appears, with asphalt, sounds like a, the only thing I would be concerned about is, again, on the west side of that is a building there that looks like it used to house people who were, wanted to sit in the shade and watch the tennis court. I consider that historic and important, and would not want to see that hampered. I did do a Google Earth, a few of the three pickleball courts that are out at Sewell Park, interesting, but I personally would love to see that, anything that's a landmark put to use for an appropriate-
Exactly.
...activity, and that certainly seems like it to me after-
Sit in the shade in an historic structure.
Yes, so, thank you very much.
It's a gallery to sit in, that's nice.
It is, it is.
It is a gallery.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brian, that's the only card I have, so what is the council's pleasure?
Well, I would move that we approve the $10,000 expenditure for the overlay. I would, I would like to have the committee come back one more time to council and, and give some bids on the striping, because I think we could get the striping done utilizing leftover CIP funds this year, again, if available. I have a sense the striping could be under $5,000. And Howard Radding, who actually, you know, brought a lot to the committee, he liked, he striped his own parking lot at his office, so I'm sure he'd be interested to figure out how to help do it here, but, but I think we could, I think we need to figure out how to get the, the overlay done and the striping done, and then have the committee actually put together, there's a fundraising committee, and actually have them put together the equipment, netting, and things of that nature.
Okay, well, my understanding, I wasn't at the committee, so I, I don't know what the conversation was, but the idea was similar to the efforts that were made by the community over at the skateboard park, that they created themselves a, what, a 501(c)(3) or some sort of organization that could accept donations, raise money, and gradually improve the site over time, in keeping with the design, that's still, everybody's understanding.
Yes, that's still part of the, in fact, in fact, I was, after reading the report, let me get Leslie, someone help me, is it Gatch?
Gosh.
Gosh, she's a wonderful, a wonderful lady, who did the fundraising for the pickleball facility and the paddleball tennis over at Sewell Park, so she's actually helping us, and Renee is doing a great job with it on this fundraising committee. So I, I see this as ongoing, and I see that committee actually expanding itself and really helping fund this activity.
So is your motion to approve the recommendations, 1, 2, and 3?
Received the, the recommendation, yes, determine the conversation, yes, done 2, and again, I'd like to move, if we can, the authorization from 10 to 15, I'm just not sure if the council would be, would, could go along with that.
Okay.
So is, what's, is motion 10 or 15?
So, so the motion is, 1, the, the, the motion is that the city council receive the pickleball ad hoc committee's recommendation, and then 2, we've made, determined that the conversion of the city all tennis court into a pickleball court does not adversely affect the landmark, and then 3, I'll just, I'll put it in it, and then I'll let you guys either support it or not, authorize $15,000 in funds for overlay and striping.
I will second that.
Okay, there's motion and a second, I have a question for the city manager, obviously, I, I shouldn't say obviously, but it's a great idea to try to combine the paving contract, because you get the best price, and I do believe that the city's been remiss in taking care of that property over the years, so resurfacing the court seems like a responsibility that we've had all along, also the trimming of the trees, which has been a bit neglected. The only question is, is there money within the recreation budget to, to handle this?
So we've included as part of the paving plan funding from the CIP for this project.
Okay, are you comfortable with the 15?
For the 15, yes. And in fact, you'll notice, we, the reason why we did the paving plan immediately after this is because this is in the paving plan, and we got a lower bid than expected, I think it was $9,200.
Okay, so, any other questions or comments?
Are, are we going to authorize this money regardless of any contingencies on how much money they raise?
Well, depends on how you look at it, I guess, I looked at it as a maintenance cost to us, I don't think we should go any further than this, and, and I think that all the future improvements either are at their expense, or as a partnership, if we find some things that we feel are, would be beneficial to the general.
The, the funding source could also donate those funds to the Parks Department, let the Parks Department buy netting paddles and, and balls and things of that nature down the road, that might be the better way for, for that funding mechanism to work, if that's your concern, and in that way, that upkeep could be in future.
Well, I just, if, if we give them 10 or 15,000 and they don't raise any money, what happens?
We have, we have a clean up ground.
We have a nice, smooth surface over there.
Which seems like a waste of $15,000 to me for a spot that we're not using at all. Which seems like a waste of $15,000 to me for a spot that we're not using at all. I mean, I just don't know, I would
It becomes a tenant.
Raise the money and come in. The skate park had to raise all the money and then ask for money. They didn't get the luxury of saying, hey, you give us the money and then we'll go try and raise.
Great, that's fine, but
I just want to make sure it gets done.
Yeah, well, I may be following the same lines you are. I don't think this should be the beginning of us taking all the responsibility on to fund this in the future for the improvement, but it didn't sound like it was. If we're limiting our expenses primarily to the maintenance and the restoration of what was there, part of what we do in a landmarked area anyway, or should be doing. But anything that goes beyond this, I think is up to the group that is promoting it. Otherwise, it becomes a tennis court for just the general recreation.
And either City Manager can join with me or Renee can join with me, but I would believe that is the goal down the road, is that the pickleball, you know, if they create an association, in fact, Ken might even be here, but I would just say down the road that what they're looking at is to have a fundraising mechanism that's ongoing, that generates money and that maintains the facility after it's received in a acceptable condition.
And I think too, a big chunk of the costs is the labor that the pickleball advocates have said they will donate. That's about half of all the costs. And so if they don't come do that, then, you know, it's not that we would pay for that. You're right that we would have no courts, or we would have just the surface, but they have committed to doing that. So there's very little risk other than this initial $15,000.
Mayor, can we have Renee come up and talk? Renee, do you want to speak to this at all?
I was just going to say that I believe after the labor costs, we only have $8,000 more that we have to fundraise. That pays for the nets and maybe a fence and so the ad hoc committee has identified the 8,000. So it is a little amount of money.
Well, I mean, should we start through, will the resurfacing happen before the money is raised? Is that our, I mean, then are we going to, what if it takes them a year to raise the money, right? Are we going to end up with a surface that's done but a year before this is implemented?
The surface needs to be done.
I don't agree with that. So, if it needed to be done, we would have talked about in capital improvement project, not in a pickleball situation.
Not necessarily, Ryan. If you look at some of our parking lots.
Okay, well, I mean, we
I get your points, but I think it's just a matter of whether
Well, the only other thing is, I would, we, the demonstration that was here, I felt was noisy and I just don't know how, we have no idea what the impact of the noise is. I know it says in here that there may be noise-reducing pickleball, low-noise pickleball equipment. I don't know the specifics about that, but it would seem like that would be a reasonable requirement for play there.
We have a noise ordinance and we have a nuisance ordinance, so
One of the benefits of this site is the fact that it's heavily surrounded with plantings. So that's going to lessen the noise leaving the facility.
I'm just worried if we utilize that space for something else and we've allowed pickleball there and we do something with the area back there and if that noise is a problem, we're going to be stuck.
I don't see us being stuck.
Okay.
Okay, any other?
Oh, that's a lot of non-answers.
Can we have an agreement? Can there be an agreement? As part of this agreement, can we put some language about the noise concern if it becomes a problem? That we look for another spot, you know, I mean,
We could, we could try to, you know, we could put signage up and different things, you know, requesting the low-noise options. That could be one thing we could do that would be relatively quick and simple.
Here's something else too. This is not going to be a nighttime activity. This is going to be a daytime activity. They generally are playing between 8:00 and let's say 3:00, 3:30. When it's 100 degrees, you're not going to, you don't see many people on tennis courts, period.
That's true.
Much less pickleball courts. So it's going to be self-policing.
Okay.
Okay, ready for the vote?
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston, yes. Mayor Pro Tem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, carried and so ordered, road rehabilitation project.
Public Works Director Greg Grant will be providing the staff
He's appeared.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Would you have your dad come in?
Had a little problem with the campfire on vacation, right? Yeah, we do have video in our offices, so it works pretty good. We can get some work done while you guys are deliberating other topics, right? But yeah, so I think everybody knows, back in July, the council adopted the plans and specifications for the paving project, for the 2019 paving project that was approved as part of the capital improvement plan. Number one in there was the street paving, that's the primary portion of the whole bid. We also included the lower Libby parking lot. I think I just heard a jab at the parking lot conditions, that'll help bring that up to par, all right? So, also, the public works yard parking lot's a lot worse condition, I can say. And we have grant money covering most of those improvements as well as trolley grant money. Discussion, the issue of the pickleball court is included there as an overlay. And then we had complete streets components, which included the South Montgomery, South Montgomery Street sidewalk fix around in front of the Gabi Maria. And that one, as you may recall, we had a larger fix originally proposed. We met with, I guess, the parking committee, Councilman Wyrick and Francina, and we looked at a much smaller version and that's included as attachment A on the administrative report. And we also have sidewalk proposed on Rincon Street, that's on the east side from Clef Vista up to Aliso Street. And then we've got curb ramp improvements throughout the whole project, which is ADA required. But also, as part of that, it's a complete streets where their bigger radiuses are tight and up to very tight radiuses. We had a good showing, we had four contractors bid. On August 16th, they were open and CA Rasmussen came in at 1.439 million dollars, as shown in the administrative report. Staff did find some minor errors, which are recommended to be waived, which will reduce the bid price by $21,000 approximately. As the table lays out in the administrative report, there are optional items in there. Council is recommending that we go ahead and go proceed with all of the items shown and that will require a budget adjustment, which is shown there as well. At least there's some reserve in the Fund 31, which we would allocate to this project. And as mentioned, the pickleball courts were $9,033 for the overlay proposed there and that'll put a two-inch overlay in that area. And that's the brief review anyways.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Bill?
Just a couple of quick questions, you know what's coming.
Right.
I was trying to cross-validate the $14,000 reimbursement for the private street with the bid schedule. And as I, you know, had in an email, I noticed that the Montgomery private portion is in, with, in the bid schedule as well, with Del Nido Court rather than with the North and South Montgomery drawing. And I was just wondering, but I don't have any sense of how many square feet we're looking at, where the $14,000 comes from that we're going to be getting from the private property owners. And I just wondered if you could provide any information on how many square feet that is?
Yes, definitely.
So we could cross-reference that $14,000 somehow?
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to, I guess that email was pretty late, I responded.
I know. I'm sorry about that.
No, that's fine, but essentially, you're right, the table on the administrative report is Del Nido Court and North Montgomery.
Right, it's a little confusing in the table.
So I think that line got cut off a little in the table. So the $58,000 shown is approximately $14,000 is the private street up there and all this bidding is on per square foot.
Right, so is the, what is the square feet of the private part?
The private part is $3,096, you say $4,000. And it's a buck 20 per square foot for the paving portion, so that's about 5,000.
20, what, 20, 220?
A dollar 20.
A dollar 20?
For strict overlay.
It's just a one and a half thick, we're not milling.
And then we're going to edge mill so we match driveways and so on.
Okay, so a dollar 20 times the square footage gets to 14,000?
The paving plus the edge grounding, they pay a portion of mobilization for that and traffic control.
Okay, so that all works according to the bid schedule for drawing 36 then?
Yes.
On the square footage?
Yes, it's all square footage.
I just couldn't cross-reference, that's why I asked the question.
Right, yeah, it's a pretty lengthy bid schedule and it's all square footage. Square footage and linear feet of edge grounding.
Right, and then one of the quick, well, two other quick questions. Are we going to at least mill slightly or tack oil this tennis court before we just lay asphalt on the existing surface? Because that wasn't clear in the bid schedule.
They're going to do the overlay, but we're going to prep it. Our crew will clean it up.
You guys are going to prep it, you're going to mill it and tack it, or at least tack it?
We're going to clean up those cracks and go ahead and make sure it's ready for the overlay, yes.
Including some tack oil maybe?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I do parking lots, so
Yep. And that'll be conventional, right, and it's a pretty good layer.
Okay, and the other question is, real quick, so the request for your authority to do change orders is 10%?
Yes.
Which would be $143,989.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was 8%, it was actually the amount remaining in the capital improvement budget.
Okay, because the resolution says 10%.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, attachment C5-10, page 202, it says 10%.
Good catch, okay, I'm sorry.
That should be 8%?
Yep, should be 8%.
Okay.
That's what the recommendation is in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Good job, Bill. That's why we have you.
It's pretty good.
I just had a couple of questions, I don't know for you, Greg, to the city manager. We had asked for White Oak, I had asked for White Oak Circle to have some type of paving number associated with the secondary or additional projects. I didn't see it on here. And the Red Hill Road and Drowned Curb repair, I didn't see that anywhere in any of this. We had talked about the uplifting of the curb gutter and probably some major tree removal, if not root pruning, but I think it's going to be some tree removal.
And I thought the way we addressed that was, we have the new trailer coming in with hot AC, crack filling and so on, and we would do an interim measure, make that our first priority to go out there and clean up that street as best we can. That'd be Red Hill area up there. And it's on the priority for next cycle, but we are very tight on this budget, like you can see. So, and then the other sidewalks, we said we'd handle that in our repair budget. And I thought, if he's, if the contract isn't up there, you should be up there any day.
Okay, so again, I was never given any response to that, so I appreciate in the future, if I ask for something, to get something. And again, as much as I'd like to go along with what you're trying to do with our group, I'd still like to see an alternative bid on that White Oak Circle. And I'm not going to get into Mercer and I'm not going to get into a bunch of other streets that are as bad. I think we all agree that our streets are in poor shape. But I thought we had, if we have some alternatives in the discussion, I'd like to include that in the overlay in the CIP versus our city staff doing it. That street's pretty bad, Greg.
Yeah, I guess our only trick is budget. If we had money, we'd do it in a flash.
So we're going to be discussing these options anyway right now. And then the final thing is, who's coordinating the overlay with the, with the Casitas Municipal Water District and their new piping system that's taking place?
Yeah, I'm handling that.
So when you say handling that, how does that work? I talked to the owner of the business of the company that's doing the pipe and they had no, they had no idea who they were talking to in regards to the city and coordinating any street improvements. In fact, he wasn't even aware that we were doing, that these are going out to bid right now.
Well, I guess when I say coordinate, I'm coordinating with Casitas Municipal Water District's engineer, the engineering manager. So we're assuring that where they're doing these overlay streets, in fact, you'll recall back when we prioritized and we pulled streets that were in conflict with Casitas because they're finally just getting that five-year plan together on what, where they're going with those water lines. So we kicked a couple off that were on priority to make sure they finish the pipeline improvements first and then we'll overlay in a couple of years or more. So we're assuring we don't provide the overlays. And then the contractor, they have to come and get, Casitas or the contractor gets an encroachment permit from Public Works as far as the work goes on the street.
I want to air out something that you and I discussed when we walked South Montgomery because we took a good look at the, I have two specific questions and I have a general process-type question. We discussed, and because you mentioned the word complete street components, we discussed what could be done on South Montgomery to not only make it pedestrian-friendly, but we saw, it connects to the bike trail and it's just a two-block stretch that goes directly, there's all these families, tourists, families, all kinds of people coming down from the bike trail to Ojai Avenue. And I was left with the impression that in order to do, you didn't think doing more was a good idea? Or what is the process for me to bring that forward, not just on this street, but on other streets? And my other question is, like, when I go to Ventura and I, other cities and I see all these, you know, complete streets components, is every single one of them voted on by the city council? Or does Public Works have a mandate? A mandate to make every single street safe for the most vulnerable of our population? So that families can go from the Ojai Trail without going on the sidewalk and their kids, you know, you know, can, why is there not a
Without going on the sidewalk?
They go on the sidewalk.
Right, here's a sidewalk with the exception of one area with some dirt.
I'm saying that you can't, as the number of bicycles increase, and they are increasing, I'm seeing mothers
Okay, this is a conversation for the capital improvements budget every year before the council. That's the process.
But, but at this, but we could have done something on South Montgomery to, we could have done something with the car parking at that point. Or am I mistaken?
I think that when we went out and looked at it, we were looking at a much longer section of sidewalk improvement around, centered around that tree improvement, which would squeeze a street to calm the traffic and in response to the concern for, what about having room for future bike lanes? We said, all right, we'll just focus on the very tightest area possible, not encroach on the street width at all and look at adding bike lanes from Ojai Avenue down to Montgomery, to the bike trail.
So that's something that's going to come up in the future or what's the process and why is it delayed? When we're already, as a city, we're really behind in many respects, you know, implementing
Right, I mean, I think that's a concept I can work on, put, if we can stripe in bike lanes. I think of striping being relatively inexpensive, as well as, I know there was a concern up by Topa Topa School,
Yes, that was going to happen.
That striping, this project won't inhibit or block bike lanes, it's really a striping project. And I think there is a solution, easier solution up there, and we're looking at Montgomery as well, to see if we can add the bike lanes. Our issue's always been in this city, we have 40-foot standard curb-to-curb, which means you have a standard eight-foot for parking and 12-foot for travel lanes. And if you have that, again, if you narrow those bike lanes to seven, so you got 14, you've only got 36 left. I'm doing some bad math there, I guess, that would be
I understand.
But you can do a four-foot bike lane next to a curb, but next to a car, you've got to have five-foot minimum to make sure a door doesn't open. Even then, it's not a great idea. So if you do the five-foot minimum, you don't really have a sufficient travel lane, so you have to get rid of the center lane. So I think up on Topa area, Topa School area, it'll work. And Montgomery, we're going to take a more careful look, there might be a little bit more room in that area.
When is this going to happen? People want to know.
Okay, well, we're not going to be able to decide it tonight at this meeting because this is just about the improvement program that's already been bid out. We can put it on the agenda for a study session or something.
And I was going to say, to answer the question more generally, the two main real mechanisms for getting a lot of these projects approved is through the CIP and through the complete streets master plan. So typically, these are all included in there and then we kind of, you know, if something comes along, we'll address those as they come along. But, but we, all of these were ones that were in the CIP for this year.
All right, I will grapple with that.
One other quick question. I believe we have a budget review scheduled in October, where we're going to
October revised, yeah.
Let's say we're optimistic and our revenues are running ahead of projections and we would be able to, say, address White Oak or the Firebird Plaza Alley or something like that, that are definite needs. Would these unit prices, what would be the deadline for implementing some of these unit prices if we wish to do so? By change order, I noticed the project basically is supposed to go through December. So would we have the option if we exceed our revenue projections to make, to exercise some of these unit prices in October? Or is that going to be too late?
I think October's fine, yes.
Okay.
Right, I think as long as the contractor does one mobilization effort for the grind and the pave, I think we'll be happy to take the extra.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have one card here, Russell Sidney. Hello, Russell.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Russell Sidney, you're from the GHG mitigation guy. Russell Sidney, you're from the GHG mitigation guy. So the concern is that these paving projects are basically the main opportunity to put in bicycle safety features, and they can be put in at the least cost, given they represent a small add-on to a large project. 1.5 million for cars and zero for bikes is not going to get us a bicycle-safe city. If it's not too late to add some features around the Topa Topa Elementary School, it would be great if we could do that. It's not a lot. We need a bike lane going up Park Road, onto Ires, so, with a way to turn, for the kids to turn safely, left on Mountain View and into the school. It's some paint. It doesn't take that much to add it to these projects. We also need safety enhancements to get them off campus and down Park Road. That would make a huge difference to the safety of our kids trying to get into that school. I don't, do not understand why these things are being such a problem. And yet, this project has made it again apparent that the procedural problems are keeping this city from becoming a bicycle-friendly city. And yes, I have raised these issues with regards to budgets. I'm really pleased to see that the staff and the council is having discussions about how we can create a more functional procedure for improving our roads that affect bicycle safety and get this stuff moving. We really need those projects. You guys have acknowledged the climate emergency, and this is the nuts and bolts of it. If we want to get people out of cars, there's very few alternatives. I cannot recommend putting people into unsafe bicycle lanes, unsafe bicycle routes. We need to help them to be able to ride safely. And with the kind of money you're spending just to make smooth streets, don't you think we could figure a few thousand? I mean, 15,000 for pickleball and zero for bicycles? Come on, guys. What's up here? Anyway, thank you for your ongoing efforts in this area, and I'm looking forward to seeing some real results sometime soon. Thank you.
The only card we had on this one? All right. What do we need here? A motion to approve?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, and I would just say, I'm going to make a motion, but I want to say I'm, to respond to Mr. Sidney's comments. That was really the spirit of my question. As we find, when we do our October budget review, there may be some additional needs, and I believe you already responded that that's the last thing you do is stripe, and we may be able to have the, if the, if the money's available, we could, that's a priority that we could follow. So that would, I see that as part of the October budget review, to see if revenue exceeds. And a priority for me would be to put any revenue exceedance into capital improvement, personally. So, okay, I was going to make a motion.
I was just going to say something, but I really, I greatly support what Mr. Sidney said. I've noticed that there's a lot more bicycles, I think, traveling around Ojai right now with electric bikes, as somebody who has one and loves it. But I also think that bicycles share the road. When we pave the roads, it's a lot safer for bikes, too. I don't think that goes totally unnoticed. If you're driving around at night, as I have done extensively now on electric bicycle, the roads that are well-paved are a lot safer. So I just want to say there, there is a correlation between the two. I wish we could do more, but I don't think that it's exclusively a car situation that we're promoting by paving the road. I think we are also promoting bicycle safety by having roads that are not as bumpy.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendations of staff with the additional provision of a review of the program at the time of budget review in October.
Yeah, second?
Okay, motion second. There are no further comments? We'll have a roll call?
Mayor, I just had one, I had one comment. So we're all in favor of doing the Libby Park lower parking lot right now at this time?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I, yeah, I think, I mean, bottom line, as you well know, I feel that we need to be looking at things like bike improvements and charging stations and tour buses, but I don't think anything that we're talking about here precludes that upon reflection.
And the Public Works yard. What's the, Greg, can you answer, what's the extent of the overlay in that?
That was, you said a funded?
Right, and keep in mind, that one is just upper yard where it's really severely damaged. It's primarily being funded by a trolley grant, because the wash pad had some improvements to capture the stormwater runoff, the wash water runoff. So that was funding, that paving as well. And we had, as part of the Southwest franchise agreement, they'd ship in $10,000 a year for impacts to the Public Works yard. So that's primarily the, the factors paying for that.
Okay. All right, well, okay, having said that, that's, that's fine. I, I just, yeah, I just, I just think that public right-of-ways are a little more important than service yards. And the use of the lower tennis parking lot, I'm not sure if that's, if that's more important than, again, the streets that I can call out and the streets that we drive on on a regular basis. So I'm, you know, I'm just trying to balance this in my own mind, that streets versus parking lots versus service yards, and so.
As far as, go back to Public Works yard, we also have an ADA issue there, so that establishes an ADA parking space, which we don't have, and we've got a demand for it. But agreed, yep, the lower Libby Park lot is a substantial cost, right? You've got 73,000, yeah.
It's in pretty bad shape. I'm hoping our revenue is going to run ahead of projections.
And if we have to do something creative with that parking lot, there may be an option. I mean, we're not talking about putting any other parking lots anywhere, so maybe redoing that, and maybe some of the money that comes out of that may be to help get people to park there.
Well, I think what I'm looking at, I agree with you. I think what I'm looking at is this parking committee coming back with some different recommendations. For instance, we have tour buses now that are parking on streets. Why don't we do that parking lot at another time and actually?
I agree.
Create something for tour buses.
Well, we talked about using this.
Yeah, we did.
For the tour buses.
And then the other aspect of this is, once again, if we're going to designate people to go down and use that parking lot, we need to figure out how to get them into town.
Yes.
So we need to think of, again, in the parking, some type of shuttle service. So we need to be thinking about all of these elements.
We're going to be starting meeting next week, I believe, right?
This week.
This week.
Next week, next week, you're right.
My God, yeah.
So having said, those are my, those are my concerns about those two areas.
I've done that twice.
They're not going to hold me up.
It would work for some people to walk through the parking.
While we continue planning the rest of the Public Works for the city, why don't we take care of this item?
We'll have a bicycle rickshaw.
Yeah, okay. Please call the roll.
Mayor Protam Prantina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyreck?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
And again, that includes the amendment to 8% on the change order.
Correction, yeah.
It's actually written there. Yeah. It's just wrong on the back. Just noting that.
You even went to the, you went to the back of the last page to find that, that's pretty impressive.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, we're on item number six. City manager.
Yeah, the city attorney will guide us through this. I'll quickly just say, if you've been to any large city, or even small city recently, and seen the scooters lying on the sidewalks, typically Lime or Bird, or now I'm hearing that Uber and a couple other brands have them, those are what the ordinance as crafted is intended to address, but I'll let the city attorney take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. So what's before the council is a proposed ordinance that would prohibit shared dockless on-demand motorized scooters, which is designed to pick up the scooters we've all heard of or seen, if you've been to Santa Monica or San Diego or Sacramento, San Francisco. Anything above about 10,000 in population now seems to have these scooters. There, to our knowledge, are none in the valley. This is intended as a bit of a pro, as a preventative measure. SEMI recently had a number dumped in the city. The company that was, owns those tried to cut a deal. That deal was not cut in the city, I think, just impounded them all. I want to hear from the chief. Beverly Hills has impounded a bunch there as well. The council has the power to prohibit the shared on-demand motorized scooters, the inherent in the vehicle code and in the power of the council to set rules and regulations governing the public right-of-way. The rationale for why staff recommends this ban is based on the council's existing policies to promote a variety of safe transportation measures. Scooters are on alternative transportation measure, but the evidence, at least from the other cities, that have them has shown that they're not necessarily the safest. There have been a number of accidents and even a fatality or two to date, from the fact that they are, the scooters can go fairly fast, they're electric, and they can thus go fairly fast, 30 miles plus an hour, and that on a sidewalk is a conflict with individuals. The council does not have to adopt the ordinance, it's your choice. If desired, it could be expanded to not just prohibit the shared on-demand variety of these scooters, but also such motorized scooters, period. The last point I'll note is that, like a number of things that come out of the app economy or the gig economy, it seems that, looking at other cities around the state, one of the major problems has been how these scooters take over the public right-of-way, not so much when they're in use, but when they're not in use. Instead of having a warehouse or a place of business to store the scooters, these companies model is to store them on the sidewalk. They dump them in areas, and then their app, they're available on their apps, and folks who are inclined to use apps can go find them and move them around, but when they're not being used, they're just simply dumped on the sidewalks. And for what it's worth, if the council's interested in an alternative approach, not a ban, a number of cities have adopted ordinances that allow but regulate them. Oakland comes to mind as one of the better ones. In Oakland's case, there's a permit system, the companies have an annual permit, there's a per-scooter fee, there's a series of regulations about where they, where they can and can't be placed on the right-of-way. Enforcement, to me, seems very difficult, because it's individual users using a scooter. They probably don't read the warning on their app that shows up, and the city is empowered to move them or impound them if they're not placed in the right place. And Oakland has also adopted an equity requirement that scooters be placed originally or seated in certain areas at higher levels than in others, because Oakland has a long history of economic and racial segregation, and they're trying to correct that, that perceived wrong. That model probably isn't right here, but I just noted it as another option. With that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one question. Just the, just the legality of someone tripping and falling over one of these scooters that are left abandoned on a public right-of-way. Who's accountable?
So the lawsuit would be against everybody. The city, the scooter company, maybe the adjacent business. The city would have some defenses, but we'll be the biggest pocket in the room, and as the biggest pocket in the room, half the time, we end up hanging.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So have you had a chance to investigate cities that have really good bikeways and the scooters don't need to be on the public right-of-way? That's one, one question I have, because I did hear, to me, the problem, the problem is a little bit like him. The problem is not the scooter. The scooter is a great idea. We want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Scooters are going to be in our future, whether we like it or not. It's going to happen, because they take up less room. But I don't know how, why it's such a mess. I don't know how, why.
Because they're dockless.
What's the word dockless mean?
There's no place that you have to put them back.
They literally leave them on the sidewalk.
Okay, so this.
Against buildings and stuff.
Okay, but why, this is another one, where I'd rather see a moratorium, because this is exactly one, we want to encourage the proper use of human-powered and electric vehicles and reduce cars. That's, that's our goal. So it's our job to figure it out, and we have to figure it out. The planet depends on us figuring it out. So.
We're debating.
Um.
First of all, we have some public comments.
Yeah, I got cards, so.
Okay.
We didn't know we had some.
Steve.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and staff. I wanted to speak from personal experience in this. Back in April, my wife and I and my brother and his wife all went to Washington DC to see some arguments at the Supreme Court. But those of you that know the area, we stayed in a B&amp;B northwest of Union Station, and we walked down all around the Capitol, around the Supreme Court, and all the way down past the Lincoln Memorial. And everywhere we went, we were dodging moving scooters, and half the time, when you're dodging a moving scooter, you're tripping over a discarded scooter. It is, it's, it's a terribly dangerous thing for pedestrians. And we were, we were hardcore pedestrians for about three days in that city, and I urge you to keep them out of Ojai. It's just a bad idea. We don't have room for bicycle lanes everywhere that we want them in this city, but we don't let bicycles just ride up and down the sidewalks, and yet, that's the purpose of these electric scooters, is to ride them up and down the sidewalks and then dump them when you're done with them. It's a bad idea, and I hope you will ban them. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell Sidney. You're back. We missed you.
My middle name's Bad Penny.
His car is charging.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, Steve's perception is, is accurate. There's chaos out there in this industry, and it needs to be fixed. Couple of important points. People, the fatality rate on scooters, which by the way are limited to 20 miles per hour as are electric bicycles, is negligible. If you want to talk about things that kill people, let's talk about automobiles and vehicles. The other thing about these scooters is they're phenomenally energy-efficient, 1,000 miles per gallon equivalent. This is a serious solution to getting us out of our cars and away from having to contribute to the destruction of our biosphere through greenhouse gases. And they're not ready for, they're not, Ojai is not ready for them, and they are not ready for primetime, from my point of view. There's just too much chaos. What we need to see coming about is effective regulatory and enforcement guidelines, including acceptable standards for public rider behavior and sound business management practices from the providers, which may, from my point of view, include requiring a docking, so that we can have safe and orderly use of these vehicles. And these things do not belong on the sidewalks. I think that keeping them off the sidewalks, especially in this town, because we don't have much in the way of sidewalks, means that we need to have a safe bicycle routing system that these things can be used on. And if we can get our act together, we can be reasonably well down the line in terms of creating that in the next three years. And we'll let Chicago and Oakland and the other people figure out the regulatory and enforcement part of it. So I would encourage you not to just put this in there in perpetuity, because then we would have to fight to stop something. If we could get this ordinance so that it sunsets and needs to be renewed, then we can have an intelligent discussion about how to adjust things so that we can conceivably introduce a serious solution to transportation that doesn't increase the damage to our biosphere. So please consider being able to do that. And if we can just get that to the point where we have, you know, a reasonable basis to bring these things in and a reasonably easy way to do it without having to get all out of sorts about whether we're going to keep a permanent ordinance in place, then I think that would be suitable. Let's bear in mind that both Siberia and the Amazon are burning, and the timetable for the destruction of our biosphere is accelerating as a result. This is, you know, this is, you guys know. Thanks.
Well, real quick, I have a question for Russell. Russell, do you know how they, if they're non-docked, how do they get recharged?
What happens is they have people that run around with pickup trucks and pick them up, and then they take them to a location where they get charged.
Okay.
It's one of the things that needs to be sorted out, because there's some possibility that process is, in fact, canceling a large part of the environmental.
Yeah, right. Driving around picking them up.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So that's another reason, to wait for a while.
Not using a scooter to go pick them up?
Exactly.
Yeah, right, so, so one person uses a scooter to go three miles, and the pickup truck chases it down, right?
Exactly.
Thank you, Russell.
I am diesel trucks.
Well, no, they're Rangers and stuff, but yeah.
Okay.
May I speak?
Susan.
Yes, okay. This is going to take a little bit of a paradigm shift, okay? But I know, we spoke, we met with the new superintendent of schools, Tiffany Morris, and we've met with, over the, over my 25 years being active in city bicycle advocacy, I've probably met with hundreds of parents. The fact is, everything you say about scooters can be multiplied 10-fold addressing cars, okay? There are hundreds, every morning, there are hundreds of kids being driven because cars don't make the streets safe, okay? So, and our, by not being able to regulate and accommodate, because people are going, it's not just the dockless scooters, which sounds like a really unregulated, crazy first attempt. It's a first attempt and it'll get, it'll get fixed because it has to be fixed. There are lots of people using scooters on their own, human-powered, electric. There's more and more alternative, there, you know, when I was on Shady Lane, I saw all kinds of people rolling down, it looks like they're standing on a lawnmower or something and, you know, an old-fashioned kind. There's all kinds of stuff coming, what are those other things called?
Segways.
Segways, yeah. And we, we, we need to recognize that we don't have the infrastructure, we do not have the infrastructure to accommodate human-powered, alternative, non-polluting transportation. That's the bottom line. We do not have that infrastructure. And if we are serious about the climate crisis that we're in, we will, as a council, make it our mission to solve those problems. I agree that we are not ready to have these, these things do not belong on the sidewalk, but we've already banned kids on skateboards, they're trying, you know, they want to skateboard to town. We have made, we need a paradigm shift that sees that it's not, it's immoral that cars are still the dominant form of transportation in a small town like Ojai, that kids can't ride their skateboards safely to the skate park. You know, they've been, we have made it so that we're caught in a vicious cycle where parents drive their kids everywhere when only, you know, a generation ago, we used to walk and bicycle or ride or skate, okay? So our, we have to look at this, the fact that we need to ban something that's a good idea that needs to be regulated because we just don't have the infrastructure to accommodate it. That's what I want to say. And I've said it.
And you're glad, and we're glad.
And I'm glad. And that's my job. That's what I was elected to do.
Yeah. I, you know, I agree with most of what Suzie says, I just don't think the, you know, the ownership model for scooters is, we're not against it, we're not changing any of that. It's the decentralized rental model that doesn't work and it is causing a serious problem. So I agree. If they can figure it out, we might be on board with it, but we're not telling anybody they can't use a scooter, you just can't rent one and leave it on the sidewalk.
But we're just telling this company that they can't come in and dump them, right? That's what we're doing.
We are, we're not allowing non-docked scooters from any company.
Dockless, yeah.
The other, the only other question is, there's nothing in this ordinance about who's fined, if there's a fine, there's not even a fine listed, there's not impounding listed, there's not a user or a company who's going to get in trouble. There's just this kind of very ambiguous, city attorney may sink injunctive relief, legal or other equitable relief to enforce this chapter, and I don't know if that even creates an opportunity for the local sheriff department to be able to enforce it.
Can we impound?
Yes, so we can impound. If you take a look at page three of attachment A, we've put in a section regarding impoundment and what will come back at second reading is a, we're going to recommend a $250 fee per scooter that is impounded. We wanted to get to first reading before we put that resolution together, but that'll come back next time. So if they're picked up, we, if, you know, one's, if this passes and one's dumped the next day, Public Works will pick it up, park it at the yard, put a little impound sticker on it, and look at who owns it and send them a bill for 250. And if they want to get it back, they need to pay the 250. And that's baked into the proposed section four, 2704 sub D. We've structured it to be enforced by the sheriffs, by traffic control officers, parking officers, code enforcement, anyone else designated manager.
Are they worth enough to not be abandoned and just add an additional cost for us and they're not going to care about the $250? And if there's no name on it?
So they have...
I mean, if it's, if it's one of these run by a company, it's most likely...
If it's one of these ones that, they have a fair amount of advertising on them.
I mean, the company name, not the individual user.
But no, no, the key here is we're not finding the individual user, we're finding the company.
Okay.
That's who we can access. That's who has money.
Now, can we also, we can, is there a way, I mean, I would, I would hope that if we saw an individual, an individual user dump one on the sidewalk, we would have a right to be able to go after them as well.
Yes, that is true. We can, if we can prove who the person is, we can go after. So if you see a rider, a scooter riding, the sheriffs or any other code enforcement officer could give that person a ticket. And if we see them dumped on the ground, we can just pick them up. And the latter category is perhaps a bit easier to enforce because all we have to do is look at the scooter and it will tell us who owns it.
Right, I mean, because if they're riding it, we don't know whether it's a rented or non-rented, non-docked.
Unless it's one of the ones that's the standard companies that will know.
Okay.
And the way that this has been done in the cities, other cities that have bans, is the scooter companies don't make it a secret when they bring them to town because they want to make it available to users.
Right.
They want to advertise, oh, hey, scooters are available now. They make it fairly obvious and then the cities go and pick them up.
Has the impound punishment structure been successful in other communities?
To a certain extent, in the end, they want their product back.
How much, do you have any idea what one of them's worth? I mean, I don't know what one of these scooters is...
You know, that I don't know. I know, for example, Beverly Hills set their fine at 1,000 a pop. They also drew a challenge that's being litigated in Superior Court. Some other cities I've seen have set it 500, 250, 750, something in that range, but I don't actually know how much they are worth per scooter, but we can try to figure that out between now and next meeting.
Right, well, if they're worth a hundred dollars, 250 is not going to do anything, right?
I think they're worth more than 100, but yeah.
But I understand, I'm with you.
We'll try to figure that one out, maybe glance at their SEC filings.
So, Mayor, why didn't we start at 250? Why didn't we start at 500?
We'd be fine with that. We were thinking 250 is just kind of a...
And then one of the questions that was just brought up is how do we identify cell phones versus leased or apped out? Because my gut says we should just ban these scooters all in general, whether you own one privately or you rent one through an app. I don't have a sense unless we have an ordinance regarding how individuals are going to behave or interact with the rest of the other riders, whether it's cars, bicycles, or skateboards, how we're going to deal with that. So maybe that's something we need to discuss later, but for right now, I think we're starting in the right manner. And then as far as future transportation in this community, I'd like, I'd like to put into thought that electrical vehicles are replacing a lot of gas vehicles. Hydrogen is actually going to be coming to the forefront within 10 years. There's, people are going to be driving in this community, period. We need to acknowledge that. The other thing is we need to look at the age of this community. And I don't see the age of this community right now hopping on segways or hopping on these two little guys and using them as a mode of transportation. It ain't going to happen.
It's happening already.
So...
And just remember, it's not necessarily the people who live here, it's people from out of, visitors here.
104-year-old people ride bikes.
A lot of tourist communities have a substantial...
So alls I'm saying is, there's a lot of different alternatives. We can argue all these alternatives down the road, but for tonight, this is exactly what this community needs to do.
Okay, can we have a motion?
I'm moving to approve the recommendations of the staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got it moved and seconded, okay?
I have more questions. This says the use of shared on-demand motorized scooters. What does that mean? It doesn't say dockless scooters, doesn't say anything about a company.
Are you planning to vote for this?
No, I'm not voting for it.
I didn't, I didn't think so, so I'm just wondering.
I have too many questions. I think this is too draconian. I like the idea of a, Russell's idea prohibiting the use for three, a three-year limit so that we're motivated to get our act together to accommodate these vehicles. In other words...
Mayor, can we close the debate?
Okay.
I have a second.
Is there a second to that?
What was that rule you quoted?
Is there a second to that? Well, I'll second it.
I don't know if Suzie's finished or not.
Well, that's the idea of closing the...
I didn't get, I didn't...
It might have naturally closed itself there for a second.
No, no, I didn't get answered to what shared on-demand...
Well, why don't you make a motion to amend the thing, to add what it is you'd like to see in the ordinance?
All right, I'll make a motion that we put a three-year limited on prohibiting the use of what the dockless motor, unregulated dockless motorized scooters.
You're asking for a sunset clause, is that correct? That says that at the end of three years, if it hasn't been extended, it goes away.
Well, Suzie, the dockless portion would, if you didn't include the on-demand and the fact that it was, you know, like another company that was providing it, if you just owned one and it was dockless, it would still be legal.
Oh, I see.
So I wouldn't want to include, I don't want to prohibit all, I don't think you do either prohibit all of them, but I would be in agreement with the way it's written, but a sunset clause, if that's helpful.
Okay, sunset clause?
So you want to throw your sunset clause and you got, you're seconding that?
I would second that, yes.
Okay, so let's have a show of hands or a roll call on the amendment, that is to put a sunset clause saying that this ordinance will automatically be void at the end of three, at the end of three years if it hasn't been extended in the meantime.
Is that right?
That's what you wanted, isn't it? You wanted it to go away by itself without not just staying in perpetuity.
Well, you know, we have to, we have to make sure that we are very, the point is to motivate us to get our infrastructure together. I was thinking it would just be revisited or maybe Russell could clarify what he had in mind.
It's between the council...
Let me ask one, I have one clarification. Would this include if a mob shop wanted to rent out scooters?
Provided the mob shop scooters are not accessed via, via an on-demand electronic portal, then no.
Well, it says, it says smartphone access code ID card, I wasn't sure, I mean, if they, if they need their, if they need their California driver's license to rent one, that sounds like it could fall under an ID card requirement.
But it wouldn't be accessed by an on-demand electronic other portal. So I think the, if you have a brick and mortar business that's renting individual scooters that once they're parked, can't be picked up by anyone other, can't be legally transferred from user to user to user, rather than going back to the home base, so to speak.
Okay.
Something like that would not...
So you don't think a rental company would apply? If you want to rent a scooter in Ojai, this would be okay?
If you're a scooter company where the renter, this, this...
It's like where it requires a brick and mortar to shop to...
Right, and the brick and mortar might not have to be in the city, it could be in the county, but the key being that you can't, the user can't just drop it and transfer it. And you know, that's the definition. The next section, what's prohibited is making one of these shared on-demand scooters available for rent or leaving it somewhere. So a scooter that you rent from the mob shop, you rent it?
As long as you don't leave it somewhere, essentially. So like even if one of the local hotels that has bicycles right now had motorized scooters that they were lending or renting, as long as they were required to come back to the hotel, they're okay.
And for like a local hotel, I would expect that they would be available only to their guests. They may charge for them separately, but they wouldn't be available, not anyone could walk up with the phone and rent it.
Okay.
And they'd probably be well labeled with the hotel label so we know, oh, that's a hotel scooter.
All right, thank you.
I think the public would have these same questions. So you're saying that this ordinance does not prohibit scooters that are either returned to your house responsibly, like a bicycle, or to the, to the, to a business, the Ojai Valley Inn, the mob shop, whatever.
Right, that are individually owned or individually locally, corporately owned.
I want to be crystal clear that this is not banning the responsible use of scooters.
It also...
That's a bit of a broad statement, but it doesn't...
I know it's a broad statement, but that's all I have, you know? Not on, you know, they're not meant to be on the sidewalk, but on Sunday morning at 6 o'clock, there's no traffic, you could ride your scooter to the coffee shop.
As long as it was an individually owned scooter, yes.
I'll second the motion now.
Yeah.
Actually, I think you did second the motion.
Where are we?
Okay, we had an amendment on the floor with a second. Are we voting on that or are we, do we have another motion to?
No, we're, if it's closed, we're gonna...
This is the sunset vote?
Okay, this is about, city attorney, I presume, will be able to create something that says this goes away at the end of three years if it's not revisited and extended.
If not otherwise.
Yeah.
If no other action is taken.
But we have the option of revisiting it.
You always do.
Yeah.
Always do.
Before that's over.
Always do.
Always.
Always can revisit.
You can revisit anything in any time.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Weirick?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No. Okay, now we have the main motion. Can you call the roll on that?
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina? I'm still thinking. Well, no, I think it was made clear to me that it just applies to the irresponsible public nuisance, so I'll vote yes. I'm not crazy, I can revisit this. Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Weirick?
Yes.
I'll be revisiting this very soon, as soon as we get the infrastructure.
Okay, we are now down to, on the council member reports.
I don't have any, but...
That's fine. You don't have to.
No, we've been off for a month, so it's, we haven't had a whole lot of going ons. I just wanted to make sure I had some comments later on that I would like to make. Are we going to have time for, do we have time for that?
Are we talking about for agenda review?
Yeah, and some in general.
Okay.
Okay.
I subbed for our mayor at the OB GMA and OB GMA is sending a letter, their alternative plan, if everyone doesn't know, under the Groundwater Management Act, was denied, so they're determining what they're, how they're moving forward. There's still some questions in the air, but in a related note, I wanted to let everyone know that I am representing a number of people in the Channel Keeper case, that is the city of Ventura, who sued by Channel Keeper, who is going, who has, they have named every pumper in the valley and the entire watershed as part of that case. In the next few months, they're also going to name every landowner in the entire watershed. So we should anticipate that that is coming down the pipe. There's not a lot for us to do, but that will most undoubtedly include the city of Ojai.
Wow.
Okay, nothing here?
I just have a future agenda.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm actually, I was one of the two council people that went to the HAMP working group that we've already talked about and I thought it was extremely informative and very productive. And it illustrated the benefit of having public process, which was missing, you know, to have a full airing. And it was actually more agreement than I thought there would be between a lot of the professional growers and the concerns that we were expressing. So I thought it was most helpful and I want to acknowledge, I believe that Supervisor Bennett helped provoke that working group to meet. I believe so and I wanted to express that appreciation. Also, I want to express appreciation, Michelle got me involved in listening to a webinar on the gas issue. I still have a lot of questions about it. I'm not, I still, even after the information that has been presented today, I have, I still have additional questions, but it is something that I participated in and I'm thinking about.
City managers' report.
I'd like to quickly just make a couple of comments. We have received confirmation from the superintendent that we will be able to move forward with a joint meeting with the school board on Monday, September 23rd at 7:00 PM. So we'll start posting notices and information to the public on that. But we have that, that we are working on and I'm meeting with superintendent this week to kind of finalize some details.
Will it be here?
It's going to be at the Boyd Center.
Boyd Center.
More people, yeah.
Yeah, good, great.
So we'll start letting the public know about that. And then the, just as far as the next council meeting, a couple of items we have scheduled to come back tentatively at this point, but hedges fences and walls was requested to come back on September 10th when we last had it, so that should be coming back. I'm also bringing back the building services contract as requested last year that it had come back earlier than December, so we're going to try to bring it at the first meeting in September. And we also have received an offer to have the agricultural commissioner come and do a brief presentation on HAMP. And so I think that there's a consensus, consensus among council where we will confirm that if that is desired, so. Cool.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Okay, Suzie, you said you had an agenda item? Everybody will get a chance.
Yes, yes, I would like to put the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee on the agenda, as Councilmember Haney requested, and so that we can review, and then I'll discuss with you how to go about reporting what, you know, yeah. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, I was planning to bring that at one of the next two meetings, so I'm working on it, and I can, we can get it back to the council.
Yeah, and it's okay if it's, you know, as long as it's in the near future, because there's a lot of background research that we're still doing. And then I'm going to listen to a webinar about the reach code on Thursday, I think. And is it appropriate, is it too soon to put that on the agenda or not?
I think so.
I think it's, you think it's too soon?
I do. There's a lot of studying to do on that, I think.
Yeah, I'm attending the same webinar, so I don't have all the facts yet, and then, but I have heard that we have to opt in by September 30, I think, is what I heard, so we'll have to-
Yeah, that was my concern.
Yeah, if that is accurate, which I will look at in the webinar, then we'll have to get that on a future agenda.
Okay. And then solar panels. We keep getting all these emails from the Ojai Valley News. Is that something we can put on this, on the agenda, or should that be handled when we discuss priorities of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee?
Actually, Sue, Mayor, can I interject? I think that would be a great item to have on the school board.
Yeah, let's wrap that into the parking committee.
And parking, but also have it on the school board agenda.
Yeah.
Yes, wonderful idea. Yeah, yeah.
Is this the idea of the solar farm?
Yes.
Since we're talking about parking lots, let's wrap it into the parking.
Yeah, yeah.
I was planning on wrapping it into the parking committee discussion.
Bring it forward some way, okay.
That's how I was looking at it.
Okay, that sounds good. And then one more. I would like to see Creek Road back on the agenda. There's just too many questions. I think it is, and Tina has some information she wants to present.
Okay, we're working on a report on that now. Greg, Republic Works Director, so we're planning to bring it back in September.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Randy, do you have?
Let's go. First of all, I just had some questions because we hadn't, the Affordable Housing Project, Mayor, on Montgomery. Any updates on that?
Oh, yeah, update.
The Affordable Housing-
You're in Bill's, Miley's Affordable Project?
That is a good question. That somehow got wrapped into the discussion with the Becker Group, is that true?
Government agreement, yeah.
Okay. So I'm just wondering where it's at, and if we can bring that back.
Yeah, I have two, I think, yeah. Can we have a report back on where it stands?
I think we're at the point where we'll have something to report back in the next couple of weeks.
And then, and then there was a, again, maybe, maybe to add to the school board agenda, is some type of a, looking out for a joint maintenance agreement between the school, us, and maybe the county at Soul Park, because they do have a large maintenance yard there, that we might be able to look at as a joint venture, and that in turn might free up our maintenance yard for affordable housing. So, just a thought. Energy Alliance, Mayor, this is, we haven't had a report regarding that in a while, but I understand that Southern California Edison and Southern California Gas have pulled their funding. One was, I think, 250 million, and one was, 250,000, and one was 150,000. But I was wondering how that was going to impact the alliance. So it might be a question that maybe you and Michelle can look for us. And then hemp manufacturing. I'd like to agendize for a discussion on how hemp product is going to be brought into our community for manufacturing, if it is allowed to be brought in. So it's, I think it's a thought that, I think it's a discussion that we have to have. I was looking at the ordinance here, and I didn't see anything regarding transportation of hemp and how it's going to get to these facilities.[1771.51]